Good evening, everyone. Apologies for my tardiness. Welcome to the October 4th Planning Board Meeting. We'll start as usual with attendance. William Gerlach.
Present.
Chris Schreiber.
Here.
Janice Gomes. Janice is absent. DeCard. Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Bea Lopes is absent.
I think she's going to be late.
Okay. And Stephen Clark?
Here.
And I am Tricia Hilton. I am the Vice Chair, sitting in tonight for Chair Stu Hardy, who is absent. Also with us this evening is Todd Romano, our land use legal consultant and solicitor, Ashley Sweet, our consulting planner, Nathan Michael, our consulting engineer, and Edward Tella, our land use clerk. Item one is an application from Clearview Inc. It's a petition for a minor land development preliminary plan variances modification pursuant to Section 6 Minor Land Development or Subdivision and Section 15 Unified Development Review. The location is plat 114, lot 104, 331 Main Road, Tiverton. And the development is an adaptive reuse of an existing structure to convert the first floor for commercial use to units of commercial use. And the second and third floors for residential use of four total apartments. Is the applicant here this evening?
Madam Chair, I spoke with their attorney, John Garahy. He had planned on being court excused as it was already. And the engineer for the project was going to present the project this evening. Unfortunately, his father passed away over the weekend in South Carolina. So he's attending to those matters and asks that the matter be continued to the next regular monthly meeting. And he has agreed to extend the time clock to November 30th.
Can I make a motion to extend the time clock to November 30th?
I have one question before that. Do we have to open the public hearing and continue it?
Public hearing was already opened previously, so it's still open.
So there's a motion then to continue this application until our next regularly scheduled meeting, as well as extend the time clock till November 30th, 2024?
Correct.
And the public hearing will be continued. Is there a second, Chris?
I'll be the second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Okay.
Junanus. Item number two is a petition for Stafford View Farm, Harkins Stafford Pond LLC. Request pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 452348C to determine whether the previously granted master plan approval remains vested to allow submission of a preliminary plan application for Phase 2, a nine-lot rural residential subdivision. The location is plat 216, lot 106, at Zero Bogomars Road. Is the applicant here this evening?
No, Madam Chair. Engineer Smith sent us an email just before the meeting indicating that his client would be out of town and asked if the matter be continued and that the time clock also be continued for the certification of completeness to December 15.
Do I have a motion then?
There is no certificate of completeness at this. Well, first, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this until December 15th.
Continue the meeting until November 12.
November 12.
And the time clock to December 15.
And the time clock to December 15.
Thank you.
There's a motion in the second discussion? Is Eva? Did you have a question?
No, I just asked when the time clock was.
There isn't yet.
To get a completeness.
There isn't yet, Rosemary. They've submitted an application. We've told them that it's not appropriate. And we're trying to determine, or they're trying to argue, I guess, that their master plan and/or preliminary plan for Phase 2 of this project was vested. So there's no no time clock yet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments? In that case, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Nope.
Kristin.
Kristin. All in favor? Well, we're moving right along here. Application number three, or item number three, the owner applicant is Tiverton Heights Limited Partnership, Harkins Homes LLC. Petition is for Pecasset Reserve, also known as Tiverton Heights, extension of the preliminary plan. There is a hearing. It's a major land development comprehensive permit application to construct 275 units composed of single-family duplex townhouses and apartments with 25% deed restricted as low and moderate income. The location is 797 Fish Road, plat 110, lot 207. And I see that representative of the applicant is here this evening.
Hello, Mrs. Hilton, members of the board. Bill Landry, representing the applicant. He can't be here tonight, as has just been noted. But I thought we could go forward on this matter. Tiverton Heights, I believe the controlling date would be May 22nd, 2023. The preliminary plan decision was issued on November 18. It was rehearsed by the planning board with notice as a substantive revision. And a modified preliminary plan decision was recorded on May 22nd, 2023. That decision indicated that it's good for two years and then is subject to the two automatic extensions under the statute. Out of an abundance of caution, we made the extension letter as if it was November 18th, the first of the two decisions, just playing it safe. So we have extended that. This meeting is what the statute refers to as an annual review of where the project stands. I think, as you know, that there's been substantial site work that's been done on the project. There are a number of pieces of heavy equipment there. They've done a lot of blasting. They're in the process of removing and processing those materials, getting them out of the way so that they can begin to work up the roads. Mr. Harkins is working on a final plan submission. I don't want to say it's imminent, but I think you'll probably see it within the next couple of months or so. We don't expect to need an additional two years, but we're going to take the first year and ask that it run from that May date of the most recent preliminary plan decision. The focus of the final plan discussions that are underway are on the precise phasing. The project's going to begin with the east phase closest to Fish Road. It's really almost like two projects. They're separated by a path, but they're almost two distinct projects. This is the easterly portion that also contains some apartments. That's where the project is going to start. And he's working on a micro basis involving some tax planning as to how the individual phases would be subphased for condominium declaration purposes. So I think you'll see us sometime early next year with a final plan. So, or I think it's administrative plan, but in the event that it's determined that it has to come to the board, you know, we'll see you at that time. I don't know if you have any questions for me. The project is probably still very familiar to you. This is a fairly perfunctory step. My understanding of the statute is that there is an extension that's available by right. But there's a requirement that the applicant show up and explain, you know, where the applicant is. And you probably know that better than I do by seeing the work on the site. You know, it's in some pretty rough stage of site work now. You probably won't see the construction of homes, certainly. Obviously, not until after the final plan of review. But that's not likely to happen until much deeper into 2025.
I'd ask Ashley if you would like to comment on the legal requirements as far as an extension for this particular plan. The statute allows and enables.
So the statute speaks to a two-year approval for the initial approval and then speaks to two one-year extensions and then speaks to an additional extension for good cause. So the, and Todd, please correct me if I'm wrong. But the interpretation there is the two one-year extensions are basically by right extensions. They come in, they tell you they're getting an extension. You can ask questions, but they're entitled to the two one-year extensions.
Are there questions or comments from the board? Rosemary?
I am very concerned, Mr. Landry. I haven't seen any engineering as far as buffers go, the wetlands, any type of thing. I'm very concerned about that. I mean, maybe Ashley has seen.
Yeah, that was provided for in the preliminary plan.
It was.
That was approved.
But as far as the construction going, are they encumbering into that? I don't know.
Well, the buffers are all, the area of disturbance is
Should be state.
Determinated, is determined. And they're certainly not exceeding the limits of disturbance under the permits. They, that, that's, I mean, I'm not out there doing the work, but Mr. Harkins has built a lot of projects. And he doesn't, he wouldn't go into the, beyond the limits of disturbance on the plan.
Sure, but I mean, I'm from Missouri. I'd like to see some type of documentation and assurances to protect the town.
Well, we have the assurances. We have a permit to clear certain areas. We don't have a permit to clear beyond that, either from the town or from DEM.
In the past, we've had a consulting engineer go out and do a site and give us a report. I have not seen anything. That's my concern.
That's not Mr. Landry's responsibility. So if you're asking for.
Putting that on the record.
Okay.
The only other thing I had, and I don't know, Mr. Rattell may be able to address this. And my client asked me to raise it. They were requesting an electrical connection for some work trailer or something associated with this work. And it was denied by the building department on the basis that the planning department, planning board, felt that my client owed some money to the town. And I, he doesn't, he has not been able to discern what that is. You'll recall that at the master plan stage, the applicant paid to the town the highest application fee I've ever seen in 47 years of doing this, $90,000. And that was available to the town to use for consulting, outside consulting services during the approval process. The master plan and preliminary plan. We've through those stages. And I believe there's still $40,000 in that account that probably will never be spent on permitting because the only thing in front of us is a final plan approval. That's essentially administrative. So I'd like to avoid any awkwardness. And I don't expect anybody to answer me tonight. But I don't want someone in the town thinking that there's a problem with the project because there's a fee that hasn't been paid. Nobody's brought anything like that to my attention. Ed, I don't know if you could add a little more detail to what Mr. Harkins has been told. But he's a little frustrated. It appears that he can't, it's interfering with his work on the site now. There's a trailer there, it has no electricity. It's an unusual circumstance. But it's somehow being tied to a fee without the people communicating with him able to explain it. They say it's coming from the planning board. So I put that to you to see if they.
I haven't heard anything about this, Mr. Landry. So why don't you call me tomorrow?
That's fine. Yeah, it's not, it's not an urgent thing, but I don't want to have a bad reputation here with a project over something that we really don't know what's at the bottom of it. If there's a fee that should be paid, I think we would have known about it. We got through the whole, we paid twice, the master plan stage, the preliminary plan stage, and that $90,000. That, almost half of it is still left.
Any other members of the board?
I'm sorry. Can you just, once again, the statute, what does it allow for?
Yeah, Bill, the statute reads specifically, "The approved preliminary plan is vested for a period of two years with the right to extend for two one-year extensions upon written request by the applicant, who must appear before the planning board for each annual review and provide proof of valid state or federal permits as applicable. Thereafter, vesting may be extended for a longer period for good cause shown, if requested, in writing by the applicant and approved by the planning board." So it's my interpretation that the initial two one-year extensions are by right, so long as they appear and meet that standard.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Landry, can you can you tell us why there's been a fairly significant delay between the clearing of the land and going forward? You may not have seen the property, but it's somewhere between a cross between a lunar landscape and the biggest gravel pit you've ever seen.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. I've heard that. It doesn't look great.
It more than doesn't look great. It's really, it's really blighted looking. And frankly, for, you know, people who are living in the neighborhood, it's not pleasant to look at. On a very windy day when it's dry, it becomes a giant dust storm. And, you know, while by right we have to grant this extension, at the same time, those people who live in the neighborhood and live in the surrounding area are now finding out that they're looking at, you know, multiple more years of construction. So, you know, if the applicant could do something about managing the dust control, even something around some perimeter buffering, I think that that would go a long way. While we can't require it, we certainly are bound to have to grant you this extension. You know, at a time when the state of Rhode Island is pushing this affordable housing program and because it's a comprehensive permit. But, you know, this is a fairly significant timeline on a project that's a very big project in Tiverton.
I will definitely pass that along. I do understand that this is a rough stage with all the crushing going on and the moving of earth materials and big piles of things. He told me today that that's within a couple of weeks of being finished. And they'll move into a different phase. And there'll still be work underway, but it won't involve the things that really people will notice in the neighborhood, the blasting and big rock removal and noise and things like that. So I don't know about the dust. We'll have to discuss what could be done on that. Water trucks, something, whatever they do to control trucks on these projects. I definitely will pass the board's concerns along to him. I assure you.
Thank you.
If I may, did you say two phases?
There are two phases, an east and a west phase. The west phase comes out to Souza, Souza Road.
Everything faces the traffic.
Pardon me?
Everything that faces the traffic. I go by there quite often. And the heavy equipment is moving south on Fish now.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? In that case, do I have a motion? To.
For a one-year extension.
For a one-year extension.
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year extension for Pecasset Reserve. Do we need dates there? No, we'll leave it there.
We should do dates. Make it clear.
Okay. That one-year extension takes us to May 21st, '26?
Yes.
Okay, so make a motion to approve the one-year extension, which would extend the preliminary plan approval to May 21st, 2026.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you. Good night.
Item number four. The applicant is 439 Developers. It's a petition for a minor land development preliminary plan review. It's a comprehensive permit application as well. Sunset Ridge Townhomes, which would demolish an existing multifamily residential dwelling on the property and construct a new multifamily residential dwelling containing eight total units, two of which would be affordable. The location is 439 Main Road, plat 115, lot 225. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
If you, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself and your relation to the applicant for the benefit of the audience?
Yes, of course. Michael Monte of Sayoregan and Thayer on behalf of the applicant, 439 Developers LLC. As you noted, this is a petition for a preliminary plan approval of a comprehensive permit application at 439 Main Road. As the board is also aware, a comprehensive permit allows an applicant to provide a certain threshold of affordable housing units and make a single application to this board for approval. The applicant is also permitted to seek and this board is authorized to grant certain adjustments from the provisions of the ordinance as part of the petition. The standard by which this board is required to evaluate the petition is set forth in Article 21, Section 7 of the ordinance. In particular, the required findings for approval, I'll just very briefly summarize, are that the development is consistent with local needs and the comprehensive plan. Two, that the development is in compliance with the ordinance. And if that adjustments are sought, that the granting of those adjustments are outweighed by the need for affordable housing. That the affordable units are integrated within the development. That there will not be significant negative impacts on health and safety. That the proposed development will have access to a public street and that the proposed development will not result in the creation of individual lots with physical constraints in development. So tonight, we will provide evidence sufficient for the board to make those findings. To that, and I know there's a lot of public interest here. So to that end, I will first make what I hope to be some very brief preliminary remarks about the overall picture of this development and what we're looking to do. Following my remarks, you'll hear from Tom Principi of Principi Engineering, sat to my right, who will walk the board through the site plan. Cordelia Dawson, the project architect, will then walk the board through the architectural design that she put together for this project. We also have Melina Lodge, the Executive Director of the Community Land Trust of Rhode Island, who is an expert in affordable housing development, who is going to provide testimony as to the state and Tiverton's need for affordable housing, how this project satisfies that need and how this actually operates as an affordable housing development. And then finally, you'll hear testimony from James Woo, a Rhode Island professional real estate appraiser and expert in land use, who will speak to the consistency of this project with the comprehensive land use plan. So before we get into the evidence, just a couple of things I want to put on the record. As the board is aware from our concept review of this project, the existing site conditions include a multifamily home that there's a lot of interest in the public because according to some historical interest groups and certain objectors, the home is constructed in the 1700s. And it's very important to emphasize that this project, the outcome of this project does not affect whether or not my client is authorized to demolish that home. The applicant already has been permitted to demolish the existing property. So that's just a fact that I want to get out there on the record. Notwithstanding, when we were before you at concept review, there was talk about getting some archiving done by the public archaeology lab. My client committed to doing that. And I'd like to submit as an exhibit to this petition a scope of services from the public archaeology lab, which my client is committing to. I don't know if I should give that to Ed or yourself. Thank you. There should be nine copies there. So this is the scope of services that my client is committing to do for the archiving from the public archaeology lab. We want to get that out there. Second, the parcel of land being developed is two acres. And the proposal is to construct eight townhouse-style condominium units on the lot. Two of those eight units will be affordable, so 25%. And the development itself is going to be set back significantly from the street. And the total lot coverage on this two-acre, just under two-acre lot is, I believe, just under 6%. So relatively minor in terms of its overall lot coverage. Third point I want to get on the record before we get into the testimony is that this project does require certain adjustments from the zoning ordinance, which the comprehensive permit regime allows for if this board is inclined to approve the project. The adjustments are all from the Conservation Development Ordinance, which was recently passed, that we're looking for. So when we were before you on concept plan and when a lot of our plans were developed, that ordinance had not yet been adopted. And as a result of that, there are a couple of adjustments that are required. Tom is going to speak about them in greater detail, but they relate to the no-cut buffer, access to public water, and sewer being a requirement. This project isn't going to be connected to public sewer. And that the 50% of the total developable land area be maintained as open space. That's another area that we need an adjustment from. So those three adjustments are required as part of that project. So unless there are particular questions to me, I'd ask us to get into Tom's testimony.
Any questions? Mr. Principi? We're going to start swearing people in, so your name, please.
Sure. My name, Chair Members of the Board, Tom Principi, Registered Professional Engineer with Principi Engineering Company. Again, thank you. I just want to go through.
Go ahead. Mr. Principi?
Oh, yeah.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? That this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you.
Tom, before you get into, what is your profession?
Professional engineer.
And how long have you been a professional engineer for?
Been doing this for 20 years, professional engineer for about 14.
And have you been accepted as an expert in engineering and site design in the past by municipal boards?
Yes.
I would ask that, Mr. Principi, if you're so recognized tonight by this board.
No objection.
Thank you.
Excellent. Can you please walk the board through the site design layout associated with this project?
Again, yeah, just go through some of the basic concepts. Again, you know, as counsel said this evening, we've been before the board a few times. We've been working on this project for quite some time, actually prior to our client purchasing the property. So we're pretty familiar with the site. We've done extensive surveying, soil testing, and site visits on this property. It's been in our office for quite some time. We've been working with the DEM very closely. And I just want to point out as well, I don't know if you submitted for the record, we do have a stormwater ripdies permit that has been issued for this project, specifically what's on your table currently for this new orientation. There's been a few different concepts here. This evening, again, like counsel had said, we are utilizing this townhouse-style, walkout-style type of development based on the existing topography. So if you know the site, it actually slopes down in the back where the garage is basically almost, you know, falling apart. It's actually, you know, it's an unsafe condition. But there's a significant slope behind the existing two-family building. And our proposal is to put these townhouse-style buildings in that slope itself to reduce any sort of cut fills, to reduce the amount of earthwork. So as we're going to have testimony tonight with our architect, we have all drive-under garages in the backside itself. So towards the front on Main Road would be the front entrances, walkways. There are four parking spots in the front. Each unit will have a one-car garage with additional parking. So with a parking requirement at one and a half to one, we do meet the minimum parking requirements as well. We have, I believe, yes, we have 20 spaces of parking. So we have ample parking on the property. Again, to the point of drainage, recharge, you know, stormwater policies. We have that reviewed and approved by the DEM. We do have the review comments from the town. We do have the review comments from the town engineer from Weston and Sampson. We did review those. I don't know if this evening we really want to get into the bullet points of it. We have no issues with your comments. I think they're pretty straightforward that we could address. So, Madam Chair, I could keep going with the presentation and we can get into that later if you'd like. But again, I just want to acknowledge that we have received correspondence from your town engineer. There were a couple of different small, minor comments we can talk about later. But again, the ripdies stormwater permit, which I believe is the biggest permit here that reviews groundwater recharge, stormwater volume, that permit has been issued. For the septic system, formerly, you know, the permit that was submitted, again, because this project has been around a long time, that permit was submitted concurrently with the ripdies permit. So, what's supposed to happen is the septic department, which is OWTS, On-Site Waste Water Treatment System, we submit those permits concurrently. And the OWTS part of DEM isn't supposed to issue their permit without the ripdies stormwater permit. They're two separate departments. They usually don't talk. You would think they would talk. So, ripdies did end up issuing their permit. So, now, the OWTS department, septic system, is now shortly going to be issuing their permit. It hasn't been issued yet. If you look online, it hasn't been issued. They're just waiting on the final ripdies permit to be issued. So, we just have to follow up with that. So, we're not concerned about it not being permitted. It was designed per the regulations. We're not asking for any waivers or variances for the septic system, nor the drainage or the recharge or the stormwater calculations. That was all done per their rules and regulations. The other relevant permit here is our Department of Transportation. It is a state road. Again, the Department of Transportation has been taking significantly, much longer on their review times. I mean, it's been maybe three months or so since we initially submitted that. We've reached out to them. They said it's still under review, but they don't have any significant issues. So, again, just to understand, just to give the board just an understanding kind of where we are with our state permits, that they are in the process. We didn't see any sort of major red flags there, nor did the Department of Transportation and obviously DEM issue their big stormwater permit already for this project. The other thing is our, obviously, you know, the water situation. I understand, again, this project has started, you know, years ago. We've been in front of this board. I don't know when the last date was.
Concept review.
Concept review.
A few months ago.
A few months ago. We do have a letter from North Tiverton Fire District stating that there is availability. There is an existing 12-inch diameter main. I know, again, water resources in the town is a big topic. But we do have a letter from North Tiverton Fire District based on this project.
Have you submitted a copy of that letter?
I don't know if it was included in the original submission materials. We have that letter.
We have the hard copies this evening. We'd be happy to.
And I can submit this as the second exhibit to our petition.
Mr. Monti, your first one, the how, scope of services, was Exhibit 1. This will be Exhibit 2.
And to clarify, this letter, can you walk the board through when this letter was issued and what the state of the project was at the time it was issued?
Sure, yeah, this letter was issued end of January. So, it was January 31st of this year. Again, like I said, the project was in flux and changing. At that time, currently, right now, we have 16 units. So, we have eight two-bedroom units in front of the board this evening. At that time, we had a few additional bedrooms, so we actually had more flow. And it was a big... Yeah, yeah. So, again, it was just very similar.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
And I know there was some interruption. When this letter was issued, Tom, there was slightly less number of bedrooms than we have.
I think it was within one bedroom.
So, it was generally substantially similar to the project we have tonight, is that fair to say?
Yeah, it was just a different architectural layout, different configuration, very similar flow. Correct.
So, in your experience, you wouldn't anticipate any change of opinion from the department, is that fair to say?
No, no.
Well, I just like to clarify. I honestly don't know what the expected gallon-per-day usage is from the water company. The gallon-per-day usage for your OWTS is going to be higher than that, correct?
No, it's very similar, is what I'm saying. So, I think it's within one bedroom of what we previously submitted. So, again, I would have to look at the previous correspondence, our previous permit, to see exactly what that gallonage was.
Well, I would like a letter that matches the number of units and the number of bedrooms from North Tiverton Water.
I think that's understandable. We would certainly agree to that as a condition before any final plan approval, that we get an indication from the department as to the availability of water.
Right, with a letter that states the number of units and the number of bedrooms on the letter from North Tiverton.
That would be agreeable to us as a condition going into final because it is true that the unit and bedroom count was lower when that letter was issued. And we acknowledge that. We recognize that.
Right.
Yeah, so it would be 1,840 gallons per day, right now.
Right, and this is 1,495.
Right.
Could you also walk the board through the adjustments that this project requires? I think that would be most helpful.
Yeah, the 70... And again, I know we had some discussion and it's a new regulation. So, again, I'm not as familiar with it either. I'm not sure if the board is, the 75 no-cut, is that the... And again, I apologize because it's so new. But I'm not sure what the reasoning was behind that. If it's meant to say 75-foot buffer or are we trying to not disturb 75 feet on all sides of the property? Honestly, it's the first I've ever heard of that regulation. I know it's new.
There is disturbance within 75-foot.
Correct. So, the context with that, again, with our project, as you can see, you know, we do have the driveway within 75 feet, the OWTS within 75 feet. I mean, again, we have a registered landscape architect on board here. They aren't here this evening, but we did provide a landscape plan. I know our client's more amenable to provide additional screening. That was the whole thought behind that 75-foot no-cut.
Mr. Principi, let me clarify what the standard is.
Yep.
Because I think it's pretty clear. The project shall maintain a 75-foot no-cut buffer around the perimeter of the entire project, excepting for entrance and fire emergency access. So, what is your question?
Well, that's new, right? When was that?
June 24th.
Right. So, again, I'm not just not as familiar with it because it's so new.
That's fine.
So, but that's why we're asking relief from that because I don't think it's even practical on a project like this. I mean, it basically limits us significantly to anything, even the septic system.
Just hold on for one second. I think you suggested that the language was unclear, so I want to know, is that language unclear?
So...
I don't mind if you ask the way I just want to know if it's unclear.
Because I read it real quickly with Mr. Monti the other day and I just, if you could give me a second, let me just see. So, okay, so for me, from an engineering standpoint, here it is. So, verbatim, 75-foot no-cut buffer. So, again, just a buffer, right? I mean, a no-cut, a vegetative buffer, right?
And Mr. Ramono has the full text of the ordinance. What you're looking at is an abbreviated portion. But in any event, is it fair to say that this project requires an adjustment from that provision of the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and again, you're clarifying for me just as the engineer working in town on the new ordinance. So, again, a no-cut buffer, meaning keeping the natural vegetation as close as possible.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so, certain sides of this project are within 75 feet, there's disturbance.
Correct. That's correct.
Other adjustments this project requires include that the proposed project have access to both public water and public sewers, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And can you explain to the board why an adjustment is required from that provision?
Well, again, we talked about the water and then, again, public sewer. Again, we don't have sewer.
It's not available there.
Exactly.
So, in other words, the public water, we anticipate being available from the condition that we get that letter. The public sewer, this isn't hooked up to the public sewer system, so that's why an adjustment is required.
Correct.
Can you talk about the open space adjustment that's also required as part of this project?
Yeah, so again, with the open space, we do have that big bio-retention basin required by the DEM stormwater quality back in the... That would be the northwest corner, so the back right corner of the property. Again, is it open space? Yes, it is, you know, open to the tenants that, you know, will reside there. The rest of the property, again, besides the septic system itself, will be all open space and undisturbed.
But it's technically correct that under the ordinance, only 14% meets that standard?
That's correct, yes.
Fair to say? But I think what you're conveying is that the bio-retention in the rear, you know, because that takes up so much room, that's the majority of the reason why we need an adjustment from that provision. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, I don't have any other questions for Mr. Principi unless there are questions from the board for him.
I don't have any questions per se, but we do have, as you mentioned, we do have a memo from Nathan Michael questioning specific specific components of the plan, particularly as they relate to stormwater management and infiltration. I think there's also a question about the location of trash receptacles or what the plan is around trash. Nathan, do you want to briefly discuss with the applicant your concerns and what you would need to see in order to be comfortable?
Yeah. Yeah, so the first comment was on the stormwater management plan. As David mentioned, he has a ripdies permit. He provided the calculations, the summary, the backup documentation. The one question we had on the bio-retention area was that it shows two discharge weirs. And on the plan sheet, it doesn't really clarify whether this erosion control on that side of the weirs. And then, there's also two details that, one's called the curb outlet weir cross-section and the other one is called the emergency spillway overflow weir detail. So, I wasn't sure if one of those is meant to describe the weir or...
That's correct. Yeah, and we could add clarification. One is to describe the rear, the other one is the overflow. And we could add a riprap, you know, spillway as well for the erosion mitigation. That's not a problem.
Yeah, so just clarifying the erosion control of those weirs.
That's no problem.
The next comment was on the water. Just that the existing service size, the size of that service isn't clear on the plans. It's not noted. So, just that it's going from a two-family to an eight-family, so we're most likely going to have to upgrade that service. In the plans, it only shows the proposed water and sewage occur. But it's most likely going to have to replace the main on there. You should mark the size of the water.
Yep.
That was the water service that you needed.
Right.
And then, just commented that there was no OWTS permit provided, but it sounds like it's being reviewed and approved by a DEM. So, we have no one to comment on the OWTS because it wasn't provided. And then, provisions for trash disposal are unclear. So, if you could just show if there is a sheer trash space, just show where that is located on the plans and also any type of turning provisions that will be needed.
Yep. Right. Right. Yep, it'll be all private trash pickup. So, we'll show that detail on the plan and in the enclosure.
I think the applicant would be amenable to incorporating those as conditions of approval at the preliminary stage, that those items be revised on the plans that the applicant would agree to that. So, if there's nothing else for Tom, I'd like Cordelia Dawson, the architect, to walk to the table, please.
Yeah, weren't you also asking for relief on the 20-foot buffer in addition to the no-cut?
Tom, why don't you have...
I thought you wanted to zero that one out also.
Yes. I appreciate that. I'm going to review the list of adjustments we're seeking right now to make sure we're not missing any.
Mr. Taylor's correct.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taylor. So, in addition to the 75-foot no-cut buffer we had previously discussed, the Conservation Development Ordinance also says that an additional 20-foot setback from the no-cut buffer is required. So, for the same reasons, we need relief from the 75-foot no-cut buffer, we also need relief from the 20-foot for identical reasons.
Correct.
Is that what you're trying to say, Tom?
So, you basically asked for relief from everything.
I would disagree with...
You're going to zero everything out and the 14% open space is so far below what's required.
Yeah, and I would disagree with the characterization that we need adjustments from everything. We need adjustments.
What you asked for.
That's correct. That's correct. There's four adjustments by my count, the 75-foot, the 20-foot, the fact that we're not connected to public sewer, and the open space requirement. So, those are the four adjustments we're seeking. And we intend to present through the evidence tonight and the submission materials that the need for affordable housing in Tiverton outweighs the granting of those adjustments where we're here asking you.
I'm starting my tearing down a two-resident building.
Well, I just, again, as I said at the beginning, that whether or not we're granted approval for this application, the applicant does have the absolute right to take that building down. And in any event, and I realize there's a sensitivity to that, but it is a reality of this project. Is there anything further for Mr. Principi? Any questions for him?
Thank you, Mr. Principi.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you.
And could you state your name for the board, please, in your relation to the applicant?
My name is Cordelia Dawson and I'm the architect on the project. Thank you.
And how long have you been an architect, Ms. Dawson?
I've been practicing architecture for about 20 years and I've been a certified registered architect since 2010. I have a master's in architecture from the Boston Architectural College and I've been principal of Cordelia Dawson Architecture and Design for over seven years. I work predominantly in single and multifamily residential design.
I would request that Ms. Dawson be recognized as an expert in architecture.
No objection from the board.
Ms. Dawson, were you retained by 439 Developers to produce architectural plans for this project?
Yes.
Can you please walk the board through those plans with particular emphasis on the massing, the floor plans, the materials? That would be most useful.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Monti, you don't have this in digital format where we could see this.
We did submit it.
Yeah, I realize that, but for the benefit of people who are here or who might be watching at home.
I don't have... I think Ed may be able to put it on the board because it was sent as an electronic exhibit.
But in the meantime, go ahead and start, please.
All right. As Tom discussed, the new eight-unit townhouses are set back quite a bit further than the existing two-family. The proposal puts them about 100 feet back from the front property line on Main Road. And they are laid out in a sawtooth plan, so they're offset about seven feet each unit. So, this does a couple of things. It breaks up the massing. It reduces the overall scale of the development and it offers some privacy between the units. Each unit is about, contains about just over 1,200 square feet. Thank you. Of living space on the ground, the first and second floors with a single garage underneath. If we can...
I'm going to scroll up some more.
Yeah, like move the view if possible. So, you can see the drawing on the left shows the aerial view from the... So you can see the, the drawing on the left shows the aerial view from the front with the entries on the left side of each unit. And then the view on the lower, right there is the view from the back that shows how the buildings are built into the slope at the rear of the property with single car garage entries and a, and a door entry as well. And cantilevered decks on the, the west side of the building. As it is developed into the slopes there, there's an opportunity to take in views, at least during the winter, towards the water. It's quite a lovely sight. We have made some little revisions since the last concept plans were presented. One of them was to increase the roof slope from a 312 to a 512 pitch. This doesn't, may not seem all that dramatic, but it's done in part to improve the aesthetic as well as to help increase the longevity of the roofing asphalt shingles. They do better the steeper they are. As of now, the proposal has the buildings at about 29 foot four above the average grade as determined at the front of the buildings per the zoning, zoning ordinance. The existing two-family is around 28 foot six above grade on my estimation, just from visual inspection. So it's very similar in height to what's there currently.
In terms of how far this is setback from the street, can you compare that to the existing conditions?
The existing two-family is approximately 39 feet from the front property line, and this is over 130 feet. So that, again, reduces the impact at the street of the development. It also allows us to work with the topography, reducing the amount of cut and fill on site. And it also affords the units to take advantage of the views that are available.
In, in terms of the floor plans, could you walk the board through those? And in particular, which of the units are presently going to be designated as the affordable units?
Yep. So the plan all the way to the right is the ground level with the single car garage. They also have a flexible space as well as space for mechanicals. And then interior stair up to the main floor. And we get to the main floor. It's an open plan with the kitchen and dining area pushed towards the rear of the unit to take advantage again of, of the views and also to facilitate eating out on the decks. There's a living space. Each unit has a powder room and with a small pantry. Units five and seven are, are the affordable units.
Is that counting left from left to right?
They're labeled five.
Unit five and unit seven. We start at the top of the plan. We start at unit one. And if we go down to the south, we end at unit eight. So they're rough, they're not exactly in the middle, but they're intermixed with the other units. And on this, on the first floor, the only difference with these units is they do not have peninsulas in the kitchen, but there's still space available.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Could you just say that a little louder?
Yes.
What they don't have.
They, the only difference with this part of the plan is that they don't have built-in peninsulas or attached islands in the kitchen area. So they're lacking that one element, which could be added by furniture. The second floors contain two bedrooms in each unit with the primary bedroom located on the waterside with a generous closet and.
Bless you.
Maybe I have to ask you to leave.
And another bedroom on the entry side. Again, the, the main difference between the affordables and the other units are that, is that there's a single bathroom that's shared on the second floor as opposed to two separate bathrooms.
Perhaps now we could talk a little bit about the building materials. Might be helpful to scroll back to the exterior view of Tom. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. So right now, we're proposing alternating with composite clavards and composite shingles, choosing materials that allude to the surrounding vernacular, the local architecture that are timeless in appearance and something that blends in with the context of the neighborhood. We have double-hung windows. We've added a window over the front entry. This is, you know, the existing two-family is a five-bay colonial. We've added that detail as it was quite typical of five-bays to have a window over the entry.
Are the windows mounted?
They are not at this point, but that's open to discussion.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I was asking if the windows were mounted, since we're talking about.
Yep.
Consistent colonial kind of look. I'm asking that.
And, and there's definitely historic context for different patterns within that. We're proposing composite trim, including a 10-inch skirtboard to go around the base of the siding and eight-inch corner boards trimmed below the soffits. For the window details, we would put in historic sills and wide casing with a freeze across the top. Additionally, we were proposing that we have at least foot overhangs on the soffit ends and six inches on the gable ends so that we do get a little bit of protection there as well as improving the aesthetic.
Are there any questions for Miss Dawson concerning the architecture?
Yeah, why in unit five is the kitchen sink centered under the window like the rest of the unit?
Because.
It looks like somebody just accidentally grabbed and jumped.
That is something. In unit five, that is something that can be. I just want to make sure I completely understand. That will be corrected before final submission. Because you're absolutely right. It did not get edited.
That wasn't intentional.
It was not intentional at all. Each one of those pieces has to be touched and edited anytime we change anything, so I appreciate your attention to detail.
Does anyone else have a question?
I do not see gutters or downsputts.
That's a great question. At this time, we're proposing aluminum gutters and downsputts. The gutters are in the model, the downsputts are not. They're harder to render at this time, but they would obviously be required. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to bring Lena Lodge to the table.
Would you state your name, please?
I'm Lena Lodge.
Ms. Lodge, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I shall.
Thank you.
Ms. Lodge, what do you do for a profession?
I currently serve as the executive director for the Housing Network of Rhode Island and the Community Housing Land Trust of Rhode Island, which are in fact two separate nonprofits. In one, we serve as an advocacy policy organization on behalf of the affordable housing sector, and on the other, we provide monitoring and technical assistance to for-profit and nonprofit developers as well as municipalities in developing and achieving their 10% goal.
I'd request that Ms. Lodge be recognized as an expert in affordable housing development.
I see no objection from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge, can you provide estimation to the board of Rhode Island's affordable housing needs in Tiberton in particular? That would be a good, useful place to start.
Sure. How long do we have?
Not, not, not that long.
Of course. You know, so I'm sure everyone's heard at this point, Rhode Island, among many other states in this nation, are, we are in a housing crisis. Particularly when we look at tenant households, the rise in rent is really outpacing wages. If you look, you know, categorically across time, wages have remained relatively stagnant, but we are seeing exponential increases in housing costs, 50, 60%, you know, across spans of time. So specifically for Tiberton, you know, median household income as of 2023 was about $85,000. The median-priced home in Tiberton is about $423,000, which on an $85,000 a year salary, you cannot afford. You would need to make an income of about $130,000 a year to become a homeowner in Tiberton. And there's just a misalignment. When we look at cost burden numbers, approximately 30% of the households in Tiberton are spending, already existing Tiberton residents are spending more than 30% of their income, which means in fact, they are, whether they acknowledge it or not, potentially housing insecure. And so, you know, if there is any fluctuation in their ability to remain housed, there are very few options for people to move into. Median rent in the new number, I think, is going to come out for a two-bedroom apartment somewhere around $2,300. You need to be making about a salary of about $85,000 a year in this state to rent a two-bedroom apartment. Homeownership is really quite out of reach.
And Lena, what is the state mandate in terms of affordable housing goal for municipalities?
10% is, is the goal. I think, you know, when we talk about it, we spend a lot of time at the State House talking about this issue. You know, 10% is really a floor, not a ceiling. We know particularly just shared, right? So almost 30% of Tiberton is housing cost burden. So 10% is only addressing a fraction of the need that you have in your community. When we look at the data, almost 30% of homeowners in Tiberton are spending more than 30%. Almost, just about 40% of tenants are spending more than 30% of their income. So a project like this provides an opportunity for even a small number of Tiberton residents, you know, and surrounding neighbors to have access to housing that's more affordable.
And are you familiar with Tiberton's numbers in terms of the affordable housing supply? In terms of the percentage?
I'm not familiar with it, but I'm certain it's not at 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
I can look it up, but I don't have the number at the top of my.
That's okay right now.
I'm, I figure everyone's aware.
Excellent. I'll reference that as 4.26%. Does that sound correct to you?
Sure, yes.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. Lodge? In that case, thank you.
I, I, actually, I did have a quick question, and we don't need to, if this is going to take too long to get into the math, but citing the numbers that you did, and I was trying to pull it up on my laptop here. I believe the, the calculation that is being used to determine the affordable housing unit cost is 130%.
120.
120. How does that compare to the 85,000 median household income? Do those two numbers align?
They do not, but that's not untypical. So under the state law, homeownership units have the ability to go to 120% AMI. And so we price the unit, you know, it's a flexible number. It's going to shift over time as the input shift. So I think the 85,000, without knowing, right, so AMI is driven by two things, income and household size. So in the absence of knowing, you know, what the average household size for Tiberton is, it would align closer to being an 80 to 100% AMI household than it would 120. But again, I think in order to create the largest buyer pool, right, if you went to 80, then you would have a smaller buyer pool and potentially limiting who would have access to that. So it isn't untypical to see developers go to the 120 and end up, you can end up with a buyer who is making 80% AMI. It's just you can't go above 120. It's a, it's a ceiling, not a floor. That sort of helps.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Lodge?
Thank you very much.
The, the final witness we have this evening is James Cool. I'd ask that he come to the table.
Mr. Cool, raise your right hand, please. State your name.
James Cool.
Mr. Cool, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to, before Mr. Cool begins, I'm going to pass out what will last be submitted as exhibit three, the petition's application. This is a report that Mr. Cool put together that we'd like to submit into evidence in which Mr. Cool will be providing commentary on. Mr. Cool, what is your profession?
I'm a certified appraiser in the state of Rhode Island.
And how long have you been a certified appraiser for?
I've actually been in the real estate industry since September 1973. But they didn't license appraisers until after Firea, when they passed an act called Firea after the savings and loan debacle of the 80s. So I was certified right when they started to do that, which would have been in 1991.
And what are your credentials as relates to land use?
Well, I've testified, I've been accepted as a land use expert for about 40 years through various communities in Rhode Island.
Does that include Tiberton?
It does.
And how does your day-to-day work involve analysis of comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances?
Well, I, I think one of the things that people don't realize about appraisal work is that any appraiser, any appraisal that's done requires a determination as to exactly what you're appraising. And that, one of the conditions of the determination of highest and best use is the legal use of a property. So we're constantly looking at both zoning code and, and of course, the comprehensive land use plan, even on a daily basis. Not, not only the usual testimony that I give in terms of zoning and planning in which it's always centered on the comprehensive land use plan. On a daily basis, we're always looking at what the legal use and, by extension, again, the comprehensive land use plan is. For a typical single-family house, that's not a very difficult analysis. But when you get into more complicated types of property, that examination of the legal use becomes very critical and, and much more complicated, so.
And that's work you've been involved with for the past 40 years, correct?
Yes, yes.
And you've been accepted as an expert in land use by multiple municipalities, including Tiberton, correct?
Yes.
I would request that Mr. Cool be so recognized this evening.
Yes, although, and, and while I appreciate Mr. Cool's experience, I would like to point out that, or ask Mr. Cool, you are not an A I C P certified planner, correct?
I am not a planner.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Has he been qualified as an expert? I just want to confirm.
He's at least an expert in.
In land use.
In, in real estate appraisal.
In real estate appraisal.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Cool, I understand you were asked to put a report together concerning this project and as it relates to the Tiberton's comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you walk the board through your report, your methodology, and your conclusions?
Sure.
Ms., I'm going to ask Mr. Cool, though, this is a fairly substantial report, and we do have a not insignificant agenda tonight. So I'm hoping that Mr. Cool can, because we all now have a copy of it, can take us through briefly.
He will get to you with the points.
I will be as brief as possible on this, and I really don't intend to drag it out. Say it again.
I don't know what that means, as brief as possible.
No, no, no. I, I, I understand the, the need for brevity in these situations, so I, I will be very brief about it.
So what were your conclusions, Mr. Cool?
All right, so specifically, there are really two issues. The issues of the standard, the variances from the standards, which I looked at, and they're very straightforward. Very typical in this type of a project. Almost every comprehensive permit that I've testified on recently has asked for a number of these. This is actually a very low number. None of them are seen to impact, have any negative impact in the surrounding area or to the project. So I, I really just, that's, you know, I, I looked at it in terms of the neighborhood. I looked at it in terms of the zoning code. I really didn't see any particular negative impact on any of the standard, the variables.
And that's with respect to the adjustments, correct?
To all the adjustments that are needed.
Can you, can you please provide your conclusions with respect to this project's consistency with the comprehensive land use? this project's consistency with the comprehensive land use?
Yeah, and, and that is where I really spent more time. I really took a, a long look at this plan and the need in Tiverton that's outlined in chapter six of the Housing of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It's clear that, first of all, just by day-to-day experience, and this was already stated earlier by the last witness, we're in really a housing crunch. There is no question that, starting in 2008, there hasn't been sufficient numbers of housing, dwelling units that have been constructed throughout the state of Rhode Island. Rhode Island Housing Marriage Finance had said in 1999, even before the COVID pandemic, that we were short an average of about 30,000 dwelling units a year for a 10-year period. We need almost 300,000 dwelling units as, as of 1999 to meet the demand. We haven't done that. We haven't even come close. There's been a lot of difficulties with zoning and planning in many areas that has held back the development. But we really do need this, so we're very short. Specific to this project, when I look at it, I, I looked, and, and just to hit a couple of the highlights, when I looked through chapter six, I noticed that in chapter six, nine, when they're talking, that the plan talks of affordable housing strategy. It, it, it notes right away that it requires the active involvement of the development community, as well as partners such as church community and a group that I work with a great deal. But they, they clearly have called and understand that private development is going to become essential to meeting this type of a goal. It then goes on to talk about how in 2004, when they were mandated the 10% affordable housing stock, the target was by 2025. And they cited the fact that with Borne Mill and Sandy Woods, that they had actually reached 5%. And they felt that within a 10-year period from then, that they would be able to reach the 10% threshold. And in point of fact, as was testified earlier, that the low and moderate income number in Tiverton is actually 4.26. So it's gone backwards since, then, since the comprehensive land use plan was actually brought out. They talk again in, in the same chapter on the need to adopt exclusionary zoning, to set aside lots for development. They talk about how that they need, again, they emphasize the fact that it needs to double, the town needed to double the amount of low and moderate income units in the, to, to meet the 10% threshold. It then goes on to talk on table six, seven, about the density bonus, calling for the use of that density bonus that is being requested here is critical to achieving that end. Then, when I, I notice in the mixture of housing types in action five, that cited, they, they talk about allowing multifamily dwellings to encourage townhouse or condominium-style development as an alternative to single-family developments in districts. We're retaining supportable density, as well as the scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood. So here we have a proposal for eight units on what is essentially a two-acre lot. So you have a density of between 10,000 and 11,000 square feet per dwelling unit, which is probably greater, it's certainly in harmony with what the zoning code calls for in the area. But it, it definitely impractical, a lot of the lots in this area are smaller. And the, so in point of fact, this is a very reasonable density.
And Mr. Hool, is it fair to say that the comprehensive land use plan in chapter six specifically targets the increase of affordable housing?
Oh, yeah.
And does this project do that?
It does, it does.
And in other words, it's consistent with those goals, correct?
It is, absolutely. There's so many, there's so much within the, the land use plan specific to the need to increase affordable housing.
Recognizing that the board has a desire for brevity and that the full report has been submitted, unless there are questions for Mr. Hool, I would ask nothing further at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hool.
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll say this, though. The board may want to question Mr. Hool if there's a subsequent hearing, because it just received his report this evening.
Certainly, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, I, I would like to make a couple of comments about the numbers. First of all, I don't believe that Tiverton's the correct number. We've had discussions with Rhode Island Housing in terms of miscounting our actual percentage of existing affordable housing. I don't believe that that number is correct. The second component of that is as of state law, January 2024, or actually, I take it back, not January, June of 2024, a community receives credit for those mobile homes that meet certain conditions. We have a sizable number of those that are in the process right now of being counted and documented to provide to statewide housing, which will in fact change our number. I'm not arguing with the idea that we need, that the town doesn't need affordable housing as does every community in Rhode Island. But I would like to point out that I do not believe that the existing number as counted by Rhode Island Housing is correct.
I, I would like to say one thing about the mobile home issue.
But that's really not so much, Jermaine, I'm just letting you know.
That's fine, I think that's fine. Just for instance, the latest publicly available data showed that's 4.26%. And that's Mr. Hool's testimony.
Exactly, and I'm just.
And I appreciate that.
I'm just letting you know that, that we are, challenging isn't the right word, but we have been in discussions because we feel that there is, that, that number's not actually accurate.
Understood.
Understood, but not there.
That's all I have this evening for our presentation, unless there are questions for me. We think the evidence that you heard, the materials submitted as exhibits, and the application materials clearly show that positive findings of fact should be made on the standards I laid out at the beginning of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay there, though. Here, I'll take a comment now.
I am. So are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this application?
Ms. Monty, you'll have an opportunity to respond when the chairwoman lets you know.
Susan?
Chair, I sit.
I can stay there.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, could I just make an ask of our in-person audience to silence their phones? We have a ding going off that is just incredibly distracting to me and perhaps others, so just, if we could just silence the phones, thank you.
Susan Anderson, I am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. First of all, I want to make mention that even though they said that they had a permit for demolition, our board was never notified of this. And per the ordinance, our board is supposed to be notified of any demolition permit for a historic property.
What section of the ordinance, Ms. Anderson?
Um, I don't remember.
1867?
Yeah.
It doesn't say that you require specific notice or to be given specific notice?
Yes, we passed that last, I put it into the town council last year. And it was a six-month, instead of 90 days, we changed it to six months. And we also said that our board would be notified of any such demolition permit.
I will look into that, but it's not what's on the town website or the muni code.
Well.
The muni code still says 90 days, does not require any specific notice.
All I know is that we, we had turned it in last year. And that's what we've been going for, this is a six-month moratorium. I also want, I would like to read into the, into the record, the letter from the Preserve Rhode Island.
We do have that as part of the record.
I know, but I would like to read it.
Okay, alas, you did keep it brief again.
Thank you. This is from Preserve Rhode Island, and it's from the Executive Director, Valerie Palm-Talmage. In 2022, Preserve Rhode Island submitted these comments to the Tiverton Planning Board for its concept plan review at 439 Main Road in Tiverton. We understand the planning board will again hear a proposal to demolish the historical house that currently exists on the lot to clear the way to construct a shared multifamily dwelling. Preserve Rhode Island restates these comments regarding the new proposal. The parcel includes the J. Russell Hicks House, number 78, in this inventory of Tiverton's historic assets published by the Rhode Island Historical Preservation and Heritage Commission. The federal period house, late 18th, early 19th century, has the classic five-bay facade with a central chimney form on the property are, are with stone walls and a barn. The condition of the building is not known. I just want to make a point that when I researched this property, I went back to the deeds, and Samuel Hicks purchased this property in 1732. So as far as I'm concerned, this house is at least 1733. A role of the Tiverton Planning Board in evaluating the concept plans for major land development is to assess the conformance with the town's comprehensive plan. Tiverton's comp plan calls for the retention of the historic and rural character of the town. Specifically, Tiverton's comp plan requires, as a part of the local review process, that owners and developers of historic properties first consider and prioritize, prioritize plans that include the preservation and appropriate restoration of existing historic structures over demolition when drafting or submitting redevelopment plans for local approval. Historic buildings are intrinsic to Tiverton's historic character. The comp plan recognizes that historic buildings are at risk, given development pressures and laments the irreparable loss to the town's quality of place. Once the building is demolished, it will be lost forever. Losing buildings one by one gradually erases the sense of place of Tiverton until character of the town, so highly valued in the comp plan, is eroded. The resolution of disputes involving historic buildings is advanced by a full evaluation of alternatives. Is demolition the only or the best outcome for the parcel? In considering the proposed project, we urge the planning board to require the proponent to assess the feasibility and desirability of preserving the historic structure. Before considering whether to approve the proposed demolition, the planning board should require the project proponent to demonstrate why the historic building cannot be saved and integrated into the development plan. How could the project's objectives be achieved with a historic building in place and integrated as a part of the overall development? Preserve Rhode Island is prepared to help the project proponent assess the condition and feasibility of reusing the historic structure. Please call on us for our expertise in assessing the feasibility of saving historic places for new uses. I also want to add that as of 2011, Tiverton has, has been a preserve America community, and it took us three years to achieve that, and I just want to continue that. The other thing I would like to say is that the house is currently in the commercial zone. We have, we all know that we need commercial property to help our tax base. Their plan, where they're putting their townhouses, is far away from where the, where the house is. They could easily keep the house as a commercial entity and put these things in back if they want. But might, and have a mixed use on this property. Keeping the commercial portion of the house and the historic structure of this.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else?
I'd like to say, I'm, I'm not crazy about the looks of it. You can't just paint a building white and say, hey, that's historic looking. It doesn't look that way. It looks like cookie cutter houses. The first thing that came to mind was tiki-tacky houses, of which I grew up not very far from. And in fact, Pete Sager's daughter lived here for years and had a little association with him, and went there and other.
Dick, can I ask you to just hold your comments, then we'll let?
Oh, sure.
Let the, the public finish, and then we'll all have our discussion, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
No, I don't really mind. I mean, people came here tonight for a public hearing, but not this one. And didn't know that this meeting was going to be happening, and you're keeping them all waiting. Now that this isn't important, my name is Jamie French, I live at 48 Craig Avenue. We have a pre-revolutionary home here that we're going to take, that we has always had people living in it. It has people residing in it until the last few years when it was purchased. And suddenly, it's like, oh, well, it's going to be a business commission. It's always been a home. Second of all, people have always lived there for how many hundreds of years? We can make it through the Revolutionary War, but we can't make it through 2024 Tiverton. So that we can tear it down and make an anywhere America crappy-looking townhouse. It's not, not that crappy, but they are, they're anywhere. They can be found anywhere in America. They do not look like New England, they do not look like Tiverton, they do not look like anything that is, it's just a, and it's just, it should be an adaptive reuse. It should be for, this committee should just say, no. That you need to do an adaptive reuse. An adaptive reuse, you could do adaptive reuse of the front of the, of the, of the original building, and then put your ugly, your anywhere America apartments or townhouses in the back. But the fact, and the adaptive reuse, I don't know if you can combine it with, adaptive reuse with a comprehensive permit, but I am sure that if someone tried to work on this, then give a real bit of attention, I'm sure you could find a preservationist to buy the house who wanted to buy it previously and fix it up and make it back to a pre-revolutionary house. Why are you stealing our history so that you can get a few more tax dollars? It's ridiculous.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? In that case.
Kathleen McGinn, 98 Horizon Drive. How much housing are we gonna, we're just gonna take all the land that we have and put a house on it everywhere and make this where we have no land at all? Should we be penalized because we make a little more money and we have the house that we have, that we should stick affordable housing in every square inch of property that we have? Should we have nothing left at all, but make it affordable for everyone to live right on top of each other? We need to have space, we need to have land, we need to have areas, you know, for, for animals. This is ridiculous.
I understand.
Thank you.
I understand. I understand the frustration, but one thing that, one thing that, that you need to understand, and you've heard the language comprehensive permit. A comprehensive permit is a state-enabled law, not, it's not a local law, it's state-enabled, where the state legislature has determined that in order to deal with the housing crisis in Rhode Island, that developers that are willing to develop at least 25% of the units of affordable are to be granted waivers from the local zoning code. This is not a local Tiverton thing, this is a statewide thing. So this too is a comprehensive permit. And I'll let Ashley speak to it a little bit more, but when a comprehensive permit comes in, our local zoning, which many of you know that we try to be protective of our water resources, our, our open space resources, our local zoning does not, it, it does not trump the state law. Ashley, would you like to just take a minute or two and talk about, about a comprehensive permit and the community situation? Oh, but if you'd like to speak first, then right ahead.
Yes, I would. From what, from what I understood here, they're talking about an onsite sewage system for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, why is it North Tiverton is supposed to be, they want everybody to tie into sewage. Am I right? They're worried about that bay, aren't they? You can have overflows and problems with that onsite system that they want to put in, just like anybody else that has their own septic system in town. Which, by the way, you know, the town apparently down in the Bay Street area, remember us? We were supposed to be.
the town apparently down in the Bay Street area, remember us? We were supposed to be getting sewerage down there. But the town is so afraid of what's under those roads that they're stalling until people have to sell their property and put their own above-ground system in, which is very expensive because the town is messing us up on that. They just did it again. We were supposed to be starting getting sewerage this August. But now that's been put aside again. It's getting a little bit, you know, fishy here with what's going on. In fact, a lot fishy.
Is that not a decision of the Tiverton Wastewater District?
Uh, excuse me, ma'am. That was a Tiverton, that was, when this was the town, already for years, DEM has been after that whole area to be tied into public sewer, sewer, okay? Then we got the contamination issue down there that the town is really very afraid of, as you well know. So then they put that off. DEM, I'm sure the only reason they're not on that right now is because Tiverton keeps putting it off, putting it off, putting it off. People on Bay Street, where you just put that line in, have to tie in. We wouldn't be able to get a permit like this gentleman wants here to get an onsite thing because the pipe goes by. Does it not go by somewhere on that area where they're going to be putting these eight units in?
No, it does not.
Well, then maybe they ought to have to pay to tie into it and put, and tie it in. That was the thing. It's like, oh, the more that ties in, the less expensive it's going to be for everybody else that's been forced to do it. So why, why the exception here?
There is no sewer, there is no sewer line to tie into there.
Right, so they have to put one in. There's one that goes all the way down those tracks.
It's not within our purview of authority.
We are not the, we are not the Tiverton Wastewater District. It's, the Tiverton Wastewater District is a separate.
But you're going to approve an onsite system where nobody else in that area of town can anywhere.
The town doesn't approve onsite wastewater systems. DEM approves them. And there is no sewer line for this property to tie into.
Up to Sousa Road that's supposed to be done. In fact, years ago when that was implemented and all that stuff started when this.
All this, these places were built here, those condos and all that, and that pipeline was put in.
The town hasn't had the authority to require.
Because in the original plan, tax revenue from those places was supposed to go for sewer.
Okay, excuse me.
You put it in the general fund.
Excuse me, whatever happened years ago, for the most recent history, there is a separate entity in town called the Tiverton Wastewater District, which is not controlled by the town whatsoever, that is responsible for development.
A place wants to put an onsite system where they wanted to sewerage? DEM supposedly that whole area was.
We're gonna have one person at a time speak, so when the chairwoman or anybody's responding to you, would you please let them do something?
And then, and then if there is public sewer available in an area, if it's there, if there is public sewer available, then the Tiverton Wastewater District can require one to tie into it. If there is no public sewer for an applicant or whether it's this applicant or any other homeowner or anybody in town who wants to build something, if there is no sewer pipe to connect into, then your option is to go to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management and apply for an onsite wastewater treatment system. The town has no ability to say to someone, you cannot have an onsite wastewater treatment system. If there, if, if there's no sewer there, it would be against the law. We have no control over people's receiving applications and permits for onsite wastewater treatment.
This town can't take care of what we have now and yet you want more housing and everything else coming. We can't afford to pay our police department, our fire department, or anything else in this town. Not to mention with all this housing that you people keep approving, are gonna add to the school system, then come back to the taxpayers because there's not enough room and this and that. It's ridiculous what this board has been doing.
We'd like to move on and let anyone else speak, because there's someone else who would like to be heard on this.
Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road. Sorry, Renee Jones, 161 Highland Road. First of all, I was a little put off by your response to the fact that you can tear the house down anytime you want because they own it. That was a little crass, I thought. I didn't think that that was quite fair. But one of the things that I wanted to say was not long ago, I went to Bristol and I attended an event called Porch Fest. And at Porch Fest, while I was walking through the streets of Bristol, I saw a historic home being moved to the front of Hope Street because they wanted to have it in the same line as the rest of the houses. So in Bristol, they are taking care of their historic homes and monitoring the condition of their historic homes. And what I'm wondering is why, I've spent how many hours volunteering for this town on North Tiverton Revision Commissions and zoning commissions? And one of the things we've been looking at and thinking about looking at and changing is being able to use mixed-use housing in commercial zones. Now here we have a historic home that's in a commercial zone. We're looking to increase our commercial properties in town. And now we're going, this house is going to be torn down. And what I'd like to present to the people here is a creative reuse of this property because you can in fact reuse this property into a commercial property that would maintain the house and also be a benefit to you instead of tearing it down. And that's what I'd like this group to think about. Instead of just cleaning the decks by getting rid of one of our historic homes, work with the town. It's a commercial property in a commercial use and we're looking at developing those things. So that's all I'm asking is to just think about it.
Would anyone else like to be heard?
I'm sorry?
I am asking, would anyone else like to be heard? In that case, I'll open it up to the board for comments. I would like to, I would like to say one thing, however. There are limits to the power and the authority of the Planning Board. We have to follow the law. There is a zoning code. That is the law. We have to follow the law. Even when sometimes we wish we could do otherwise. That property is zoned right now to allow residential multifamily housing. That's a fact. We don't own the piece of property. The town does not own that property. We have no control over it. We cannot tell someone who owns a piece of property legally that they can't do something with it that is allowed under the zoning code or under state law. We also have no historic district zoning in Tiverton. There are communities that can prevent the demolition or the destruction of historic houses because they actually have laws. They have zoning laws that require historic protection. We do not have that in Tiverton. There have been attempts in the past to pass zoning ordinances and they failed every time. Almost universally because people who own those houses come out against them because they don't want that level of control by the municipal government over what they do with their property. So as much as it seems as though the board has the power to tell this applicant they can't do something with their property that is perfectly legal, we don't. None of us likes seeing a historic property be demolished. And I also really don't know the condition of that house anecdotally. I have been told by people on, in, on certain boards and commissions that have looked at it that have said, it is frankly beyond salvaging. I don't really know if that's true or not. But, but as much as we don't want to lose a historic property, we have to follow the law. We can't have, we can't have rules or decisions based on what we wish we could do. We have to have decisions that are based on what the law is. So I'd like to open it up to the board now for comments.
Madam Chair, that was very well put. I would be remiss to offer additional comments above and beyond that. Quite succinct.
So I do have some comments and, and there's been a request by the board to have a site visit. In particular, because this is a historic property, we understand you are asking for a number of variances from conservation development. We'd actually like to see the condition of the property. We'd like to see the condition of the house. We'd like to see the stone walls. We'd like to see if there are potentially trees that are worth saving that, you know, that can be saved. So the board is requesting of the applicant that at the earliest possible convenience, we arrange for a site visit. In terms of other things, you know, on the list, you will need to respond to Nathan's comments, obviously, in writing with a plan. You don't have an OWTS permit from DEM, which may affect the site plan. I mean, you may get the, 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 the permit that you're asking for, but you may not, so you may have to change the site plan. You don't have a letter from a curb cut from RIDOT yet. We don't have a letter from the Water District yet that's inconformant. So I think, I think that a, an approval this evening is premature. I'd like to see those things be in place or further along. And we really would like to have a site visit if that's amenable to the applicant.
May I have a moment with the applicant?
Absolutely.
Thank you for allowing the time for me to confer with my client. There would be absolutely no objection to a site visit being performed. We would request, however, that these be conditions of final plan approval because the regulations do allow that we've requested these permits, the state permits, not that they have been issued at preliminary plan. It was a change in the preliminary plan process because previously you had master preliminary final. It's been truncated under the state law. So we have no objection to these as conditions of final plan approval. But we would request that a decision be rendered this evening.
Sure. We understand that we cannot make them, that the right thing to do is make them a condition of final plan approval. I think the chairwoman was expressing her desire for you to show advancement towards achieving each of those to the extent possible. Prior. We understand state.
Yeah, the only problem is, you know, I can't dictate when the state will issue those. RIDOT has been very challenging to get feedback from. So if I were to agree to that, there's, there's really, it could be, you know, the timetable could shift dramatically.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things. This is a minor. It's a comprehensive permit, but it's a minor, so it never had master plan. It would only have preliminary and final. The state law does say that state permits.
Folks, folks. Thank you.
The state law does say that you can allow, that permits are at final. What I'm hearing is not that they don't want to give you an approval because of permits, but that they want to see the property first.
Well, I heard multiple requests, right? It was a site visit and a number of other issues. That's why I had to bring it up.
I understand that not every one of those issues may be resolved, but this is not a shortlist, in my opinion. And at least some of them can be resolved in the short term. But we'd like to see some progress made on them because, because it is not a, it's not a small list of things that you don't have yet. And we would like to see the property.
And there would be no objection to you seeing the property?
Well, I think the board's point is that before they issue a decision, any decision, they'd like to do a site visit.
There's no objection to that.
So I think a site visit, because, and I just want to be clear, there was a list that included going beyond the site visit, right? So we're happy to have a site visit and come back for a decision after the site visit. I just don't want to commit on the record that we be given all of these state permits.
We can't require that of you anyway because the law allows you to submit them at final.
It was just what was requested, so I wanted to respond to it. A site visit between now and the next meeting is agreeable to the applicant.
Thank you.
Ms. Eva, to address your question about the time clock. The application was submitted July 23rd, certification of completeness 25 days later on August 17. The decision by this board is due on November 15, 90 days late, which is 90 days later. Okay?
Thank you very much. And then.
I hope so.
And will you be able to work to coordinate a site visit for us?
Might be easier to do it offline.
I think it might be easy to do it offline, but we'll try and get it done as, as soon as possible.
Why don't we do this? Mr. Monti, why don't you speak with your client? Provide Mr. Rotella with some available dates. He will distribute those to the board and we'll be in touch. Fair enough?
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, item number five is an application from Moses, Moses Goddard at 155 Pelletier Lane for an environmental review statement, application hearing. Mr. Solicitor?
Ms. Chairwoman, I spoke with Jay Lynch, their attorney. He has requested that this matter be continued to the next meeting while he looks at the application and whether it's appropriate. There's no time clock on this. It's, public hearing is not open, so it's just continue.
Okay, moving along to item number six. The first item is item A, a public hearing on amendment to the comprehensive plan future land use map. This is an advertised public hearing. I believe we will be able, Nathan, thank you very much, Nathan. We will put the proposed future land use map up so that everyone can see it. I'm assuming people are here based on the changes primarily to the waterfront zone. That's what you're really going to see as a change on the map. We'll take public comments. We'll ask, please, that, since there are a lot of people who want to speak, that you'll keep your comments to three minutes or less so that everybody has a turn and can still get home at a reasonable hour tonight. And we'll just ask that you please, we'll, the board will try and be very respectful with you. We'll ask that you in turn be respectful from the board, but we are anxious to hear your comments and opinions. Bill? Did you say something? Ashley? Would you like to do a quick overview for everybody of the, the changes to the future land use map?
Sure. Every community in Rhode Island has a comprehensive plan. Within that comprehensive plan is what's called a future land use map. This is the map where the town designates essentially policy for land use within the town. The town is then required to make their zoning consistent with the future land use map. The map that you see up here categorizes by uses. So there's commercial, there's high-density, medium-density, and low-density residential, industrial. And then the waterfront are the two blue shaded districts. There is the, the change to this map is that there are now two categories or there would be two categories of waterfront, waterfront one and waterfront two. Waterfront one would be the more intense use, which is currently would mirror the current waterfront zoning district and all the permitted uses in that district. And then waterfront two is an added new district, which would primarily be geared towards water-dependent uses at a smaller scale. So retail type of businesses that are primarily water-dependent. Some office uses that are mostly water-dependent, but it's basically creating a second, less intense waterfront district. And the only lot that's retained in the waterfront one is the large property at the Fall River Line where the. Line where the tank farm is, and then the rest of the properties in waterfront would be waterfront two, which is the lower intensity.
The map also addresses a number of residential properties that are currently in the waterfront zone that are residential. As it exists right now, technically, those properties are non-conforming, because right now, the existing waterfront does not allow single-family homes, so those properties would be moved out of the waterfront zone and into a residential zone, so that they would have all of the legal rights of any other residential property in Tiverton and not have a non-conforming status. So, we'll open the public hearing. We'll ask you to come up. Please state your name, and again, if you'll keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, excuse me. I'm Patricia Atkins Santos. I'm a Tiverton resident. I live on Main Road, and according to the colored map that I received, my property is going to be a W2. Is that going to change the impact of the value of my property? And is it going to change the tax situation of my property? Did you know the answers to that question?
I don't know if I can answer that. Is your property currently zoned general commercial? If you live, do you live on...
What's the address? Can we establish that, please?
1057 Main Road.
Are you on the water, or are you...
No, I'm not on the water. I'm above the water. I'm right there, across from Suzer Road, right at the beginning of where Scooter Drive, which goes down to the water.
I don't think you...
What's that? I'm sorry, what's the address?
1057 Main Road in Tiverton.
That's not... But to everyone that has questions about taxes and values, we don't have that answer.
Okay. So, what will the impact of this be in the change?
Well, if you're, I don't think your property is impacted here.
Okay.
I don't think your property is involved at all. I think your property is residential.
It is not.
But it is, it is colored blue. It's not.
No.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, that's what I was looking for.
Nope.
For an answer. I appreciate your time.
You're in this little orange gray here.
Ma'am, can I just confirm?
You're right in here.
And that's the residential zone.
Someone identified my home as being in the blue section.
No, it's not changing from what it currently is.
Okay, thank you.
Next.
My name is James Himes, 1786 Main Road, Tiverton.
Seventeen, sir.
Seventeen eighty-six. According to the legend, our current is general commercial. We own properties, let's see, I lost my papers. Anyway, we live, our property is right across the street from Coastal Roasters, and we own three properties either side of the Barker situation. From my understanding, our property is going to be changed from general commercial to waterfront, and I'm wondering what the implication will be, what will be the impact on us.
So, the original waterfront district was very much limited to more industrial-type uses. The waterfront two district that's been developed, that would change your general commercial to a waterfront two, allows a lot of the same uses as the general commercial zone does. It allows for small-scale retail, office, it actually even expands on what general commercial would allow, because it allows specific uses that are marine-related and water-dependent as well.
What will it allow?
What's that?
What will be the changes? What will be the negative changes?
Well, you wouldn't be, for example, allowed to have an auto body repair shop. I'm just giving you an example. The general commercial zone has more...
Greater variety of...
A greater variety of uses, including uses that might be a little more intense than what is in the new waterfront zone. The new waterfront zone is really a mix of retail, personal service businesses, restaurants, shops, you know, waterfront kinds of businesses. So, there's still, in those, in the portions of the waterfront that will be commercial, there's still a lot of opportunity, but not necessarily the more in...
Like, the history of the property, we had the, New England Ice had the manufacturing operation there, and before that was a farm machinery dealer. From what I'm understanding, those would now be prohibited.
Right, but they're not existing uses today, correct?
They're not existing uses. There are other uses on the property. There is, I have an agricultural operation where I have, where I grow two acres of flowers, cut flowers.
That would still be permitted.
I do commercially, and I use that building for storage.
That would still be permitted.
That would still be permitted.
If, just by way of example, if you look at the Stonebridge area right now, everything that's in the Stonebridge area would be permitted. It's all, it would all be permitted. It will have a different designation, but it would all be permitted.
Thank you.
My name is Lucy Pavel. I live at 88 Bay Street, Tiverton, the corner of Hilton and Bay, and we are along the waterfront. And this map is totally confusing in the black and white version. I don't even know if it goes down that far. Is this, is Bay Street being affected by this at all?
Let's pull you up for one second.
Can you give me the address again?
88 Bay Street.
Did you get the map at Town Hall?
No, it was mailed to me.
Oh, well, I know.
Coloring's expensive. As I say, it's total confusion for us down there.
The existing waterfront district is across the street now, but you're not...
That's not changing.
That's not changing.
That's what we're asking.
Nothing across, your property doesn't change, and the property across the street from you, which is currently zoned waterfront, stays zoned waterfront. It stays as the current district it is.
So, where the tanks are and all of that is not going to be affected?
It's remaining a waterfront zone. It's being classified as a waterfront two zone.
No, waterfront one. So, waterfront, there'll now be waterfront one and waterfront two. Waterfront one represents the current waterfront district. The property across the street from you is staying waterfront one.
Thank you so much. Come on up.
Good evening, Board. My name is Joseph Machado.
Oh, hang on, folks, can we, can we, if you guys, I understand you might want to talk, we'll ask you to do it outside, just so we can hear everybody here. Thank you.
No worries. Good evening, Board. My name is Joseph Machado. I'm actually here to speak on behalf of my uncle and my cousin, Gary Shaker and Ryan Shaker. They own what is labeled as Zero Bay Street. Specifically, it is parcel ID 101345, which falls into the waterfront one, which remains and stays that way per the proposed new use by the board. Ultimately, my uncle and cousin are trying to relay to the board that their land that they own falls right near that border with the R30 zoning, that is literally right across the street from it. My uncle also, at one point, owned One Bay Street as well, which is where the restaurant is, is located just a stone's throw away from it. And the current classification of those, in particular, three parcels on Zero Bay, specifically, it's 101356, 101345, and 101344, it's really preventing those owners of that land from really utilizing the land for much at all. Some concerns that my uncle does have is that, at this point, people just drive by and dump stuff into the wooded area that's there. There's minimal that he can do and my cousin can do with the land. And this is more, I guess, of a prayer to the board, but whether if it is in a future consideration of the board, but to extend either the R30 into those three plots that are there, or to reclassify those three plots that we're referring to, and again, being 101345, 356, and 344, to be the waterfront zoning two, just to give them the ability to do something with the property. Yes, ma'am?
So, hang on a second. Waterfront one includes many of the same uses that are waterfront two. I understand what you're saying. Right now, in the waterfront zone, you can barely do anything. I mean, it's silly, but there are a lot of limitations. Waterfront one allows all the same uses that waterfront two allows. So, to answer the question on behalf of your family, yes, they would be able to do all the same things that waterfront two is allowed to do. The only difference is that, is that for some of the larger properties there, they could do something that is in a scale that is a little bit bigger than waterfront two, especially, you know, on the things that are just adjacent to the gas tanks. The rest of the lots are small, so you're not going to have something very big there, but this ordinance actually will do what you're requesting.
Perfect, great. Sorry, so forward it, right, over in Fall River? But my initial read of it was that the usage needed to be bound to waterfront usage in some way, shape, or form, but if the proposed, you know, changes allow for some form of commercial utilization of the land, some form of usage absent its current state of just really being able to sit there, then at least it gives some form of future use, which is his major concern, because he acquired it in 2022 for $37,500, and at this point, no one in that area has done any form of improvement, and it's an opportunity for there to either be businesses, or items to be, or buildings to be placed up in there that could either, you know, again, bring some form of additional revenue into the town, and of course, with the improvements of the land also means increased taxes for the town as well. So, any form of increased use for those plots of land would be greatly, greatly appreciated, is his ultimate point.
Yes, I mean, you could have office space, you could have retail, and the retail's not restricted to marine-related. I mean, you could have a little restaurant there. I mean, there's a number, a whole list. I would suggest to anybody, and I think the council will have it soon, there is a new zoning table that...
I'm going to interrupt you. Because the board approved and recommended changes and uses for the W1 and W2 zones, that will also be considered on October 15.
Right, in front of the council, but this document will be available, and all of the new uses for both the zones are listed here.
Outstanding.
It is available.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Reed. I live at 21 Riverside Drive, which is in the waterfront two zone. I'd start out by commending the board's work in taking out the residences out of the waterfront zone, and recognizing that they are residential areas, the 10 historic houses at the beginning of Riverside Drive, and the five that are further on down Riverside Drive. I think that, for the first time, assures that those homes will be treated as residents and preserved as such. At the same time, however, there's notice of this reclassification into W2, and notice of a public hearing, which doesn't seem to really have told us all the proposed changes in the definition of waterfront. It's not simply a matter that, you know, it's extended here or extended there, but there are wholesale redefinitions of what's permitted and what's not permitted. And the only way I was able to try and fathom what those were required, reading a 65-page document, and I think it would be helpful to the public if the public noticed tonight or at some other time, give notice of what those changes are. For the first time in a waterfront zone, specifically in waterfront two, on Riverside Drive, between Main Road and the railroad bridge, hotels are allowed, barrooms are allowed, restaurants are allowed, restaurants with entertainment are allowed. That is a major change in the nature of waterfront. I understand, I think I understand, although I have not heard the board speak to the policy reasons for doing that, I think I can understand why those changes might be contemplated, but it seems to me they should be out front, in front of everybody, that it's not just moving the W line here and there, taking the residences out of the W, but arranging for a whole different manner of development along that waterfront, which I think changes from the original waterfront concept to something which is more tourist-oriented, which may be a good idea, but it should be out there and everybody should be able to see it. Now, I would say, for example, I'm glad to see the rows of houses put in residential, and given some respect for that, but when you read the fine print, you read that they are not quite respected the way all other residential properties are, which provide, for example, that a restaurant should not be within 100 feet of a residentially zoned area except for waterfront, that a barroom should not be within 100 feet of a residential area except for waterfront. So, cutting out, you give with one hand and say, you're residential, we respect you. You take away with the other and say that we're not going to give you the same respect everybody else is. I'm troubled and surprised to find that a real bed and breakfast, which would be a nice thing, not an Airbnb, but a real bed and breakfast, is only a special permit in this zone, whereas a hotel can be built as of right. Now, a hotel 35 feet, as we've heard from the conversations here, you're all bound by the rules. We know what goes up the street with seasons, how people are bound by the rules. I don't know whether anybody wants to see a 35-foot hotel on Riverside Drive. I realize there's valuable property there that people, I'm sure, are seeking to develop or may seek to develop, and it may be done harmoniously with the community, but for that to happen, all these little details have to be out front, put in paper, notice to everybody, so they can consider how they are or not affected by it. I don't know the answers to all those questions, but I don't think they've been the subject of sufficient public conversation, nor can they be until this full of notice. But again, I do thank the board for looking into this issue. I do appreciate the preservation of the homes on that, on Riverside Drive, and I look to see the rest of the zoning be similarly respectful of that community. Thank you.
So, let me just address what's going on this evening. This is a public hearing on the future land use map for the comprehensive permit. That is all. This board, about a month ago, spent a long time going through the district use table as far as the waterfront one, waterfront two zones, and they have made a recommendation to the town council with the district use table with definitions, and that's on for public hearing on October 15th. It's this document that is available at the town clerk's office. That is a separate hearing. At the same time, the town council will hear the recommendation on the future land use map change that this board may recommend tonight, as well as the zoning map change. So...
Well, I appreciate that defense and explanation, but...
No, it's not defense.
To people who are trying to understand it and be told, for example, we'll still be W across the street, without being told that W is going to have a different meaning, I mean, is not totally clarified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Just so people understand the process here of how...
Thank you.
Just so people here understand the process, there is, there's a zoning update committee that has worked on this zoning for months. Every meeting has been posted and opened to the public. The planning board has discussed this and taken this up at multiple meetings, where it has been posted and opened to the public, and a small number of people have, in fact, come and participated. We're now just getting to the public hearing portion of this. So, it's not as though there was some discussion of this that didn't happen in public. It all happened in public. It's just people aren't necessarily, we're all busy, we don't pay attention and necessarily come to meetings. But the documents that we are working off of are, in fact, public, and any of you can get a copy. Ashley?
I just want to speak to the, you know, so everyone understands, the, some of the uses that previously were special use permits in the waterfront district were turned into not-allowed uses as a result of a state law change that said... not allowed uses as a result of a state law change that said that if you have a special use permit, you have to have specific and objective criteria in which to make a decision on that use. The town of Tiverton did what several other communities in Rhode Island did in response to that law, which was to turn all of their special use permits to not permitted, to buy them time to write those specific and objective criteria, because it is not an easy task to determine in the future what some use on any random piece of property in town might require for some kind of standard. So it was a monumental undertaking, and to buy the time necessary, because the state only gave us six months, which three of that would have taken advertising for, they turned all of their special use permits into not permitted uses. In conjunction with bringing on waterfront two as a new district, they brought back special use permits where they were previously allowed in some cases. So the example of the bar being turned from not permitted to permitted in waterfront is the reality is, is it was taken from special use to special use. The not permitted was only an interim measure in the middle of this span of time to give the planning board and the town the time they needed to write those specific and objective criteria. So in a lot of cases, if you go back to, what's the year on this one?
Two thousand twenty-three.
So, the 2023 use table that we had is the use table that represented what was permitted, not permitted, and required to have a special use permit. If you want to compare apples to apples, you can't use the 2024 use table that held space in time for us to write specific and objective criteria. So the examples that were given of the restaurant with entertainment now is a permitted use, and it wasn't permitted before. If you go back to 2023, it was permitted. You have to compare apples to apples, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that there is a use table, it for a period of time in 2023 and into 2024, that had a bunch of noes in it as not permitted, and it was only to hold time. It was to give us space to write the specific and objective criteria, so we could bring back special use permits. So the reality is, it's special use permit to special use permit, not not permitted to special use permit.
More special? I'm sorry. Some were special permit in 2023. They're listed as permitted now, but they have, they have performance criteria that have to be satisfied. So it's not just, any hotel can go up, there are certain conditions that have to be met for that hotel.
And although not the purview of this public hearing, I, just for the benefit of the folks in the audience, what you hear being discussed about specific and objective criteria and performance standards brings a level of standardization to this that was not present before. It will benefit the town in the long run to make sure that we are consistently and objectively evaluating these potential applications against the use table. This is a benefit, and there has been an inordinate amount of time, as Ms. Hilton has explained, that we have put into this process.
To include adding things to the prohibited useless.
And that's another great point. We expanded the prohibited useless to make sure that the things that have given pause and caused consternation in this town are no longer even going to be debated, right? So there is, this board does have the best interest of the town and the people who live here in mind as we go through this process. And I would just, please, come and participate. It's welcome. Thank you.
Jamie?
Can I talk?
Yes, although we'll ask you to please again keep your three minutes and please...
Jamie French, I live at forty-eight Craig Avenue. You're taking, he said that these meetings, the zoning revision committee meetings were posted, yes, on the SOS site, but there was no link on the town website. People didn't know about it. I'm sure that most people here have never even heard that committee, because there was not one link ever on the town website. You had to know where to go and how to find it, and to know about it. We're taking, it's nice that we're giving Riverside Avenue their rights, but we're taking away Bay Street. Oh, it's okay, you're just going to have buy right manufacturing across the street from you, but that's okay. That doesn't really change anything, having buy right manufacturing. You want buy right manufacturing at Grinnell's, because that's what the zone says, that's what use table says. Use table says buy right manufacturing, manufacturing, storing, processing, and fabrication in all W one and W two sites proposed. They, it takes, they're, first of all, state laws, they, anything, this committee is supposed to be giving recommendation to the town council, but the town council has already posted the public hearing for two weeks from now. And if you give them any recommendations, it cannot be part of that public hearing, because you haven't, it hasn't been posted. There are no design and dimension requirements even written yet for the waterfront, because that's scheduled to be done tonight, which also cannot be done or added to the town council meeting. How can you say that you want the town council to accept this new, new area, this new zone, when it doesn't have any guts? It doesn't have any dimensional requirements? No one knows what the stat, the specific and objective criteria are, or the performance standard, because that's not advertised on the public hearing. Also, the public hearing notices didn't even say it was for the waterfront. You know, it said, oh, changes to the amendment, and all this, and he sent little, what, stamp-sized maps, and people, I mean, it was, it was, whoever wrote that announcement should be fired. It was the most, it was ridiculously vague. It was horrible. The Rhode Island Department of Manag-, DM has declared that the waterfront on Mount Hope Bay, it's funny how you don't have the map of the rest of the town here on the waterfront, like the Grinnell's area and all that area, but the low-impact has decided that the Mount Hope Bay area is a low-impact development area. It's a low, low-impact development area.
Jamie, Jamie, thank you. That's your three minutes. Thank you.
You haven't stopped anyone else. Low-impact development area. You don't like what I say? You try to stop me. Low-impact development area is not for manufacturing. The waterfront is the location of this zone, but not the focus. Were we eighteen fifty-four, where we need to put manufacturing on the waterfront? We don't need hydro power anymore. It's like, you can have water, this, and if you notice, anyone notices on the use table, this manufacturing, storing, processing, and fabrication is not permitted in the industrial park. But it is allowed across the street from...
This is a comprehensive permit in a future land use map, not on specific uses.
Everybody else is talking about it, including, including Ashley. You all talked about it.
And you've been misrepresenting.
The, the map is very unclear. It doesn't show where West One is, Water One is, or Water Two. Everything's very unclear. We get a whole map.
This is the future land use map, that's why, ma'am. This is the future land use map, not...
It's a future land use map that is very unclear. Some of this manufacturing is supposed to go on top of wetlands. You are changing wetlands. You're very, very, you are not telling the truth.
Okay, we're ready to get going again? Folks, all right. So, we have, we have, we have responded to some of the folks who have come up and spoken and tried to clarify things and explain things. I'm going to say that while everybody's entitled to say what they have to say, I have to say that I think that Ms. French represented so many, misrepresented so many things that we'd be here for an extra hour to try and go through them all, so we're not. But if you have a question that's related to one of those things, we will certainly try and answer. So, young man, your name is?
My name is Carlos Almeral. I live on Seventeen Foot Street, and behind me is the tanks.
Behind you is the tanks.
Behind me, I don't know what this, how to read this, but...
Okay.
Behind me is the tanks.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Behind me, thanks. So I'm on, I guess, I'm on that side of Bay Street, so I must be one, am I one or two?
You, you are currently waterfront zone.
I'm on, I'm on the, like, young lady came in and says she was on Bay Street. I'm on Foot Street.
Yes. I'm looking at your property now.
Right, and that, the property next to me, the other gentleman, the two gentlemen that were up here...
Yes.
They were talking about...
They are, they are adjacent to you.
Yeah. Did they buy that property from, or whatever?
I have no idea.
Now, now, can you, what I'm asking, I would not like to see another barroom put on outside. Has this been changed? That part of that land been changed?
You are currently zoned waterfront.
Right, right.
You will be waterfront one.
One.
The issue with the barroom, the restaurant, the hotel, those were previously permitted uses by special use permit in waterfront district.
And there's an existing, there's an existing bar and restaurant there today, correct?
No, there's nothing there. Just, it's an open, open plot. There used to be tires, and just her owned it.
Okay.
There's nothing there. There only, there's nothing there, except there was a house there, and it, but it burnt down. Small.
Okay.
The land is shaped like a, well, it comes to a V.
So, if we go back to the use table back in 2023...
Yes, ma'am.
In the waterfront district, a restaurant, special use permit, not including entertainment, special use permit, including entertainment, special use permit. Um, what else? Some of the, the names of the uses have changed. And then if you go to the current proposed use table...
That's, I'm just trying to figure out, that's all.
Restaurant not including a special use permit, excuse me, not including entertainment would be permitted use, but including entertainment would be a special use permit.
Now, can I fight that?
With performance standards.
But can I, because, I mean...
So if it's a special use permit, so, so there's a bunch of things.
I'm sorry, I don't really understand that.
No, that's okay. So there's a bunch of things. First of all, in order to have a bar or restaurant, right, or anywhere, you're going to have to have parking on your property. So you're going to have to have a lot that's big enough to accommodate the parking. A lot of lots in this whole thing could never do that, because there's no parking, number one. And then you'd have to get either, you'd, you'd have to be able to meet the setbacks, right? You can't build to the lot line. So a lot of these things couldn't be built on very many lots. But if something is a special use permit, then you would be noticed, you would get notification, and there would be a public hearing, and you would have the opportunity to come and say, I'm opposed to this for this, this, and this reasons.
All right, because I, I don't know, it, now, it hasn't been given a special, but if they can, if they, if the proprietors don't sell it now to somebody else, and then they can, they can...
They, they could. If, if the, if the lot was a, big enough to have a...
Well, they can have one, I know that, I don't...
And the parking, remember, that requires a lot of parking.
Right, no, I just, that's all.
And all those sorts of things.
Okay, thank you.
But you could come in, and you would have a chance to speak at the, a public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Next, anybody? Nobody? Okay, come on up.
I'm on Horizon Drive. How is that affecting Horizon? I'm confused with this map.
Can I have an address?
Ninety-eight.
Nothing changes at all for me.
No.
Thank you.
Yes, I have one question, one quick question.
Come on up.
What's this, this is Pat Agia, one thirty Bay Street.
That's where I live. What's this I hear about waterfront industrial there? Like, right across from my house.
Okay, so, so, as it exists right now, you already know that the gas tanks are there, right?
Oh, yeah.
I know. So, in terms of industrial or...
In the triangle.
In the, in terms of industrial uses.
And the Simpson's old property. I don't know the new people that have it.
So, let's, let's get to this. What would be allowed, but hear me out on the whole thing, manufacturing, storing, processing, fabricating activities in conformance with Article eight? And then there's a whole section of, Ashley talked about these performance criteria. So first of all, it would have to be marine-related. So you're not talking about somebody who's going to be manufacturing, I don't know, like, you know, weapons or...
I don't care about weapons. I'd probably prefer that.
Okay, well, but it has to be marine-related. So if somebody, and keep in mind, again, these lots are not big, so, you know, they're not big lots. So if somebody wants to, what, open a sailmaker, or make surfboards, or, I mean, that's, that's the kind of manufacturing that, that could go there.
Here's my other question. On one of those lots years ago, that, that house was, there was actually a house there, and one of the other lots, like, right near there, there was also a house. So why did they change the zoning on those lots that somebody wanted to build a house there, say? They couldn't even do it.
That, that happened in two thousand and one. I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you why the town changed it in two thousand and one, but it did. It, it changed that to a...
I mean, we've got enough down there with tanks. You know what I mean?
I know, but, you know, ideally, maybe this'll be a little bit, you know, maybe this'll be an improvement, maybe these'll be a little nicer, and, and, you know, and prevent some of the littering and some of the, the other stuff that, that happens down there. I mean, but we're not talking about, you know, canning factories or anything like that. It's got to be a marine-related thing.
And I can tell you, from the performance standards for that specific type of use in that district, it's, in the waterfront one, it's limited to a footprint of forty thousand square feet. In waterfront two, it's limited to ten thousand square feet. It has to, there's, you have to keep stored items that are outside in a fenced area, that there, you can't use the open lot for parking, that it is restricted to marine-related, that you have to install a fence thirty feet from the property line, that if a chain-link fence is used, that you have to install shrubs that are five feet high and planted linearly every ten feet, and that when it is adjacent to a residential use or structure, that deliveries are limited to the hours of seven AM and nine PM. So anything...
They don't do that now with the tank farm.
Well, well, well...
They don't.
Well, those are the performance standards for any, any use that goes in under the category of, what is it, manufacturing, storing, processing, fabricating activities in conformance with Article eight. So I understand, without the context, that might sound terrible, but when you add the other pieces to this together, it's, there are, there are protective measures put in place in the zoning ordinance to require that that business...
It's concerning, because we really have protective measures down there, obviously, you know?
Well, I mean, what's...
So all this is very concerning.
Well, be, what's being put in place is more restrictive than what's currently permitted.
This will improve the situation.
I don't know. Alls I know is, if you go to the floor of a public library, and you go through the really old newspapers, like, back when those tanks caught on fire, there was an article in there. In fact, the town said at the time, those tanks would never be rebuilt, and there you have it. So they really don't care much about down there. That's my point.
Well, I can tell you with, with certainty, you know, as a professional planner, that the, the things that have gone into the zoning ordinance and the change to the future land use map, and the addition of the waterfront two district are all an attempt to make the waterfront district better, to have the uses that are there more protective of the residential around it.
Keep in mind that the, there's a residential P.
That was a, a very, that was a prominent topic of conversation every time we talked about the waterfront district, was the adjacent residential uses, and that's where some of these performance standards came from, specifically because they are, it is adjacent to residential. So these are, those are improvements that will prevent some of the problems you have now with future uses. That's the intent.
We'll see. I'll be glad when I see the future uses and all this kind of stuff. We'll see. I'll be glad when I see the future uses and all this kind of stuff that is permitted, that isn't permitted, whatever, in black and white.
You can get a copy from the town clerk's office.
Great. I'll be doing that tomorrow. Thank you.
Hello. Um, my name's Colleen Stanton. I live at fifty Craig Ave. Um, I'm just curious, can you blow that map up? Because there's, um, one of the waterfront uses, I'm just confused about. I think it's at the bottom of Horizon Drive.
Um, well, I don't know. Is this in relation to where you live, or are you looking at a specific part of that map?
No, it's in reference to where I live, because we were under the impression that that area was gonna be a conservation area.
This is the Hicks property.
Yeah, down the lower part.
So here's what I can tell you about this. The Tiverton Open Space Commission and the Tiverton Land Trust, she's right, um, have been and continue in very, very serious negotiations with the family that owns that property. And it is everybody's greatest wish and deepest hope that those discussions come to fruition, in which case, um, that property or some portion of it thereof, whatever the agreement is, um, would become permanently protected open space. That is something that's ongoing. Um, we all hope for success. Um, the Open Space Commission is aware of this, um, on the off chance that they're not successful, but, um, we are all very cautiously optimistic that they will be, in which case, um, that would become, uh, that would become open space.
Okay, because I don't know if people are aware, but we now have owls there, we have osprey there, we have a ton of deer, because they're eating all my vegetation.
I can tell you that the Open Space Commission and the Land Trust are very well aware of that. And, um, as I said, they are in, in serious ongoing negotiations with the family, and we are all, um, hoping that, that this comes to pass.
Okay. And then, um, will that impact, was there supposed to be a bicycle path at some point?
Oh, the bike path along the railroad?
Yeah.
That's, 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 but Bill, do you wanna?
No, I mean, not separate and distinct. I mean, that rail to trail effort has been decades.
Right. It, it, it's not.
I was just wondering if it would impact, um, because it goes right through the, the water.
It goes through the whole waterfront. That, that's a separate sort of, there's a state organization and there's a advocacy, advocacy group and everything.
So right now, the, the Harbor Commission has tackled that. And there, there's a lot of headway that's being made on bringing it from the, um, the restaurant all the way through to the Fall River Line. So that's being pursued very heavily by the Tiverton Harbor Commission for sure.
Great, thank you. Uh, just one more thing, um, with the, um, industrial portion of this and making surfboards or whatever, will there be somebody that will watch out to make sure that resins and styrofoam and stuff isn't making its way into the water? Because, uh, you know, if you're that close, it's easy for stuff to migrate into that area. And if there's no way to enforce it.
With the EPA and the. Yeah, you're gonna see a lot of that. There'll be a lot of coverage by federal and state authorities for sure.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Klansay, eleven twenty-four, Summerfield. One quick question. The Hicks property there, I see you have waterfront zoning pictured there. Do you, can, if that goes to conservancy, will that waterfront zoning still be in effect?
No.
Okay, thank you.
If, if that becomes open space, it will be open space within open space management plan.
Right.
It won't have any commercial activity on it at all. Okay, anybody else? You've all been here for a while, so if you wanna say something, come up now, otherwise we're gonna close the public hearing. All right, well, thank you for sitting through all of this. Um, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, comments or discussion from the board? In that case, uh, do I have a motion? Uh, to recommend to the town council to adopt the amended comprehensive future, comprehensive plan, future land use map?
I would make that motion for sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are sending this to the town council with our recommendation. Okay, item B. Appendix D Form Based Code, review and discuss the dimensional and design standards for Form Based Code.
Just so.
Since the chair is not here this evening, and this is.
Can we just ask, can we just, I'm sorry, folks, we're still in a meeting. Can we just ask if folks wanna talk, maybe they bring it outside? Sorry, it's a small space.
It, it does echo back up here and we can't hear ourselves. Um, since Form Based Code is so near and dear to the heart of our chair and he is not here tonight, I'm gonna suggest that we table this item until.
Can I just say something?
Go ahead.
So what I'm, oh, no.
Go ahead. You're thinking about architectural. This is different.
Oh, geez, sorry, right. Okay, never mind.
Standards for his Form Based Code.
Go, yeah.
Go.
Go? Good? Okay.
Good.
Uh, so what I'm, what I'm asking for, and we've given you a table that compares the three current standards for the three districts in the Form Based Code in their dimensional requirements and in their design requirements, so that you could kind of see the span of how these three different districts currently regulate. Because the zoning revision committee has, would like to consolidate that into a single district. And we need to understand in order to draft which either one of the three or combination of the three you would like to take and apply to this consolidated district. And you don't have to give me specific answers. I need general feedback from you, like, you know, the, um, and I always forget the naming, but the, the district that's all the way up north at the Tiv, at the Fall River Line allows for zero front setbacks. That may not work all the way through the district. I just need a general understanding from all of you so that we can draft you something and bring it to you for consideration. I don't wanna draft without guidance, because we'll just end up spending more time kind of going through all of that and, and changing things. So if you can look at that table and give us a general understanding of what you envision those dimensional requirements being, what the design requirements should be along this one consolidated district, that would be very helpful for us so that we can use that feedback to draft in that direction. And I'll also say that using the example of the zero front setback all the way north, that's probably, that may be something that you wanna continue to allow up there, but not continue all the way down. So in, in instances where specific sections should have something a little bit different, we can craft, we can craft it so that there's a subset of the zoning district where that particular requirement would apply, but not apply to the rest of the district. It would have its own front setback. And I use that as an example, because it's an easy one, where in the northern part of the district, a lot of the buildings are up on the street. As you come south, they, they start to move back from the street. You may not wanna allow them a zero. You may wanna give them a fifteen or a twenty or whatever, you know, feels right. Um, but we could really use feedback so that we have a direction to draft in. Otherwise, we're just kind of drafting blind. So that's why I gave you that table that lays them side by side, so you can see how those three currently operate.
Okay, so that's our homework, correct?
Um, as long as you understand that we can't draft until I get feedback. So if we wanna delay, you know, giving feedback, that's fine, but it, it pushes out.
Right.
Us bringing you a consolidated district. Because we need the standards written so that it can go with the district and move forward.
Right.
We don't wanna do that in pieces.
Ashley, can you remind me, are we on the proverbial clock here on this?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean.
Two, two years, Stan?
Mostly no. Let, I'll tell you the, the, the little clock we have. And Todd and I discussed this earlier today. So there are going to be uses in the Form Based Code district that were changed from a special use permit to a not permitted use in that period of time where we, we bought time to write specific and objective criteria. There may be a few of them that didn't get specific and objective criteria written for them, because we focused on the use table that's in the zoning ordinance, and we took care of those. So there may be a few leftovers that will revert back to a special use permit in that, in that table that may not have specific and objective criteria drafted currently. My hope was to get this feedback from you, draft the dimensional and design requirements into the subdivision regulations, pick up those uses that don't have their specific and objective criteria yet, get those down, and then consolidate the district as one package. So there, and, and I think if we get feedback relatively soon, we can do that pretty quickly after the November thirty, you know, sunset reversion back to special use permit. I'm trying to limit the amount of time in between as much as possible, but can't really draft those, that piece of it until I get some guidance from the board.
So how do you want us to get the guidance to you? What's the, what is the, do you want us to?
I mean, you can.
Individually to you?
You, you can do it that way. I, I mean, I brought it to the board and put it on an agenda so we could talk through it, but if we're not gonna do it that way, then I'll take, I'm, I'll take whatever you wanna give me.
Or we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and, and go through it that way.
That's also fine.
What is the, what is everybody's preference here?
Do we want Stu to be a part of the conversation for sure, right?
Yeah, well, he can either, either way he can be. I mean, he'll be back this week, so.
Does this warrant, I'm just putting all options up. You know what I'm gonna say. It's just workshop material.
Do you wanna have a workshop?
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, what is the most prudent? I'm happy to go through this as homework and get you my thoughts. I think it becomes challenging if you're dealing to try and reconcile seven different sets of thoughts.
If you all come back to me with similar thoughts, it's not a problem.
Sure, and maybe that's a best case scenario.
But if you come back to me with diverging thoughts, then I, I have to figure out a way to bring those back together.
So Rosemary says workshop, now we've got, we've got two for workshop. Anybody else?
I'm, I'm, I am fine either way. I can do it either way. If you are comfortable, and this is really, if you are comfortable trying to synthesize a set of individual siloed sets of feedback, then I think we can do it as homework and we don't need a workshop. If you're gonna be challenged and it's gonna be a pain, it's gonna be more onerous for you, then maybe it makes sense to get together for two hours and like hash it.
All right, let's have a workshop. So how about, we don't have to pick, well, here's the thing. You can, one of the things you can do, and it's possible that we could do the workshop, believe it or not, without Ashley, if you give us enough direction about what you want us to talk about, it's possible that we could actually go through those things and come back and say, because you're not asking us to draft it. You're asking us for our opinion, right?
I'm just asking for feedback so we know how to draft.
So you, you might, you, you know, you might actually let us do it unsupervised and we might be like that, or not. So Ed, how about, we'll ask Ed to, to coordinate a date. It probably won't take too long. It's probably, and you know, it's not an all morning thing, um, where we find an hour or so to go through these things and say, okay, this is kind of our consensus, because we're not drafting it. We're just kind of like.
Spitballing ideas.
Or an evening during the week. Like, it doesn't have to be a Saturday morning, like.
Yeah, it could be an evening. So why don't we ask Ed to, um, to poll the board, find a date, and we'll do it that way. And we'll, we'll commit to getting this to you before our next meeting on November twelfth.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, moving on to item C. This is where we're waiting. Architectural design standards for the waterfront two zone. Again, um, I think we should wait for Stu, because this is so near and dear to us hard.
And maybe weave it in, like, if we're gonna, what's that? No, okay. Keep, keep those separate and distinct.
And we'll put it on the agenda though. It's a good thought, okay?
Okay.
They just, it's sort of like first comes in, maybe second comes in.
Yes. Uh, item D, return of escrow for fifty-one King Road Minor Subdivision. The applicant is Alfred Souza. A discussion and possible vote on the remaining escrow balance of one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. Um, is there any data on this as to whether or not there's any reason to hold any more escrow?
Uh, I believe, no, we both agree there's no reason. The plans are finalized, recorded, it's done.
We need to ask folks on that, make sure permanent bounds are included in the.
Um.
Mr. Souza's here, should we ask him?
Yeah.
Wouldn't talk about escrow.
Yeah, there's, that wouldn't be a reason to hold the escrow.
Before we release the escrow, we usually say, well, are they in?
Yeah.
Well, I think, Mr. Souza, could you come on for a second? Um, and just introduce yourself for the record.
Alfred Souza, fifty-one King Road.
Um.
It's a question.
Ms. Eva has a question for you.
Mr. Souza, nice to see you again. Um, permanent bounds go in?
The what?
Permanent bounds. You did a subdivision.
Right, they're scheduled with Mount Hope Engineering.
Are they in? Are they in?
They're not in.
But they're scheduled to go in.
They're scheduled to go in.
Mount Hope Engineering's gonna do that.
We should have some money.
That, you can't take it out. You can't take it out of escrow. No, no, no. Um, okay.
Well, we can't release yet.
So.
But if it wouldn't come out of escrow.
It wouldn't come out of the escrow. Mr. Souza, you're committed to putting those bounds in?
Correct.
Thank you. Um, and I'm sure for the benefit of the people in the subdivision, they'll be, they, they'd want that too. I, I'm, um, I, if there's no other reason to hold the escrow, I'm prepared to make a motion uh, that we release the remaining escrow in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Rosemary's abstaining. Thank you. Um, item E, short-term rental, short-term rentals as accessory dwelling units, discussion and possible vote. Um, I suggest that we continue this, because, um, uh, I, I still think there are, there's, we need more direction from the council. And, um, and until we get some direction from the council, I think we're a little bit spinning our wheels. So I'm going to suggest that we table this and, um, potentially ask our solicitor uh, if there's future, if there's more direction from the council now or at some point in the future that would allow us to tackle this.
Could, could I just, could I just ask, so I think this happened before my time on the board, the, the set of, the public hearing that was had on this? I think it was prior to August of twenty twenty-three when I joined the board. I don't recall it.
It's been going on for very long times, but the town council addressed it previously. I don't know if this board has addressed it.
Okay. I, I was trying to, ultimately, I was trying to get my hands on some older artifacts, documentation related to this. I, I don't know where to ask for that, but.
We can get you meeting minutes if you want those.
That would be helpful.
We'll have that. Ed, can you sit that together?
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So, so I'm actually going to suggest that this particular item not be continued, that it be tabled until at some point in the future where there is more guidance and direction as to, um, what the town council would like.
I have a question.
Yes.
I think that's a suggestion. But I, of the specific, the ADUs, where do you get information on the ADUs?
What information do you want?
I want, I asked the building official a couple of questions on it. He says it's changed three times.
The current standard is what was passed in June of this year, with sizes, number of bedrooms.
If you have questions, I can answer them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect. Uh, item F, approval of minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
We need to get the twenty-four again.
We don't have the twenty-four times, just the September tenth. Um, so, has anybody, uh, are there any comments about the minutes of September the tenth? No, hearing done, uh, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September tenth?
I want a motion to approve this, Rick.
Thank you, Dick.
And I'll stick to that.
All in favor? Okay.
Our editor is not here.
Status in, uh, the zoning code provision committee, I'm on that committee, so I will give you a very brief update, which is, at our last meeting, we went back through the Main Road Commercial Zone again, just to make sure, because it had been a little while, and to marry it back with the new uses that got added as part of the waterfront zoning and the new use table, so that it's all exactly the same, um, and the committee took a vote on that, and will be sending to the planning board, or is sending to the planning board, the new recommendations for the use table for, um, the Main Road zoning. Update from the item, H's update from the North Tiverton Business Park Committee, uh, Stu is the representative to that, and since he's not here, I don't think that we'll have that tonight.
I'm here, if you have questions.
Oh, would you like to?
Well, I'm, if anyone has specific questions, I can.
You did an exciting tour.
We did, we did a site walk of North Tiverton, um, with the consulting team and members of the committee, um, we are currently working on the website and, um, promotional materials, we have a list of initial stakeholders, business owners, property owners in the district, so things are happening, we are working.
Just, can you remind me when those meetings are, is it a standard schedule, or is it ad hoc?
Typically, the, uh, every other Wednesday, um, so the next one is scheduled for the ninth.
Is that during the day, or?
Nope, it's at seven o'clock here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, um, the last thing you may have noticed in your packet, a number of documents related to conservation development and things, um, from, um, um, from, from our, our training event, so they're in your packet, um, I'm sure if you need a hard copy, Ed could help you out, um, but it was, um, very good, um, I'm wondering if the board should consider just sending off a quick thank you note, um, because we did such a good job, so, um, maybe we'll ask Stu to pen a little something and send it off, show our appreciation.
Sure.
Um, and other than that, if no one has anything else, I will ask for a privileged motion to adjourn.
So, move at nine thirty?
Two.
Two.
In favor, yes, we're adjourned.